Welcoming you all to tonight's city council meeting. If you're here thinking that this is a regular Wednesday meeting, congratulations. It's a surprise. Today, we are holding night three of our scheduled annual budget hearings. And so tonight, you're going to be hearing presentations from multiple offices across the city, followed by questions by council members. And then there'll be a chance at every single presentation for the public to give commentary. And then council will also give comments. Tonight, we're hearing from the Bloomington Housing Authority, from the HAND department, from planning and transportation, from engineering, from Bloomington Transport, and from the City of Bloomington Utilities. Our goal is to get home before tomorrow, so we will, you know, hopefully do exactly that. Now, before we start, I'd just like to read the land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on stolen land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward, however, knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past, so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. With that, I'll ask that the clerk call roll, I think. Does that have to happen? It doesn't have to happen? Okay. It doesn't have to happen. Is everybody here? No?
It has to happen, but you have to do it.
Okay, that's exciting. Okay, I'm going to call roll then, and I'll start. It doesn't have to happen? It doesn't even have to happen. Well, it doesn't have to happen, but they said I'm going to, so I'm going to real quick. Councilmember Flaherty, councilmember Zulik.
Here.
Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Councilmember Stasberg.
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Here.
And councilmember Daley.
Here.
And I too am present. Okay, well, with that, let's get started then. We first have Bloomington Housing Authority, and they will have 10 minutes, followed by some time of questions. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for asking me to join you again tonight. I wanted to let you know that this will be the last time I'm doing one of these budget presentations, because I have submitted my resignation to the Board of Commissioners. I'm retiring at the end of January, and I'm going to go be a full-time grandmother. Yes, very happy about that. So.
Could you please state your name, just for the record?
Kate Gazunas, Executive Director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. So our slides show have been presented to you, and I'm not going to walk through them slideshow by slideshow. A lot of this information you're pretty familiar with. I do want to get to our 2025 goals. The Board of Commissioners has been through some strategic planning meetings here recently, and we are going to be posting our five-year plan for HUD, our updated five-year plan for public hearings, and it's available on our website. And these goals include advancing housing access and choice. And basically, what we mean by advancing housing access and choice is to create more units through development. And we're planning to add about 50 more units next year. I don't know that we'll get finished with all 50, but it includes the 38 units that we'll be building at the Core Hospital and renovating and building. It includes 10 units at our Land Trust property, which the city gave, arranged for us to receive that land over in the Arlington Park community. We do not have a name for that subdivision just yet. I, being from Colorado, and the names of the streets are Denver, Telluride, and Breckenridge, I recommend Ski Town, Bloomington. We'll see how that works out. And then we're going to be adding three two-bedroom apartments above our early learning childcare facility right across the street, again, on land made available to us from the city. We're going to work on number two, improving housing success and community outcomes. I don't know if I'm going to be able to catch up with some of this. There we go. The community outcomes and success, where we're using the Summit Hill Development Corporation to do both community service-type projects, as well as housing projects. And the first community center is the childcare facility with up to, I believe, 28 children from ages three, ages birth to three years of age. And we're partnering with Head Start for the care and the teachers and the classroom. The three two-bedroom units that are above the classroom areas for the infants and toddlers is hopefully an opportunity to help subsidize the salaries of early childcare providers who don't earn a lot of money, but may be able to live in subsidized housing, if they're not, if they're not interested in that, or for whatever reason, they would just be part of our regular inventory of units. The next one is leading with excellence, resilience, and community outcomes. And part of this is to increase our communications and increase our outgoing partnership and our visibility in the community. I have basically been pretty buried under the 70, we're about to finish up our $73 million rehab of 302 units. And that construction process was pretty intense. And I haven't been able to get out and work with community groups and do public speaking much, and I'm hoping to do that soon. Actually, I'll be passing that baton to someone. But I do refer back to that in just a second, which is building capacity. We're looking at increasing the staff. That was part of what I put in our, I'm going to probably go forward and then come back. Yeah, with Personnel Services, where we're looking at adding three additional full-time employees. With that, becomes the necessity to be doing some remodeling inside of our building. And so we have $500,000 identified to create those additional offices in a small meeting space and full-time positions there. And last is a new one that the Board of Commissioners added, in which is building housing leaders of the future. We have had, for many years, an internship program in partnership with IU. But what we don't have is any structure to that internship. If somebody identifies the need for an intern, it's kind of, you know, catch as catch can, who can you get? The capital outlay, and I'm going to back a slide, the $500,000 is for that remodel. Otherwise, we don't really don't have capital outlays, per se, from the Housing Authority. But we are going to create, and in fact, it is the job of one of our new interns, who is just starting, to basically put brackets, structure, start dates, salaries, an entire program for internship for housing authorities. Most little kids grow up and they want to be a teacher, they want to be a doctor, they might even want to be an engineer on the train. I have yet to hear of a child who wants to work for a housing authority. But we all know that the crisis in affordable housing is severe, not just here, but throughout our country. And so what we want is to expose more and more university students to this type of work and service to your community, and not necessarily just the social worker. So one of my interns right now is an intern who has a major in journalism, and her minor is in advertising and marketing. She's putting together a plan. We don't use our interns just for assistance. We give them a project to do for us. So she is writing a media plan in a notebook. She is working on our website. She is working on a whole lot of pretty exciting things that I'm going to roll out to the Commissioners here in the month of September. And then I have another intern who's starting, and she's going to actually be writing this internship program for affordable housing. One of our commissioners, and I serve on the Legislative Committee for National Housing and Redevelopment Officers, it's called NARO. It's one of the premier vertical organizations for affordable housing. And they are very interested in adopting this program and then teaching this through their national, in four conferences a year, as to how other housing authorities can create internships. So after we have the parentheses on that, we'll be working closer with the university as well, for them to fine-tune it and make suggestions for us. I'm going to switch real quick in the remaining three minutes and just talk about our Housing Authority a little bit. We have 1,696 vouchers. And with that, we have been paying approximately $14 million to landlords, most of whom are local residents. So that is the economic impact of the vouchers to this community. Of those vouchers, we have 50 VAS vouchers. We have 12 single-resident occupancy vouchers that we administer. We have, we're down from 28 to 20 emergency housing vouchers, so those serve the homeless. And our per-average unit subsidy is now just under $800 a unit. We raised our payment standards. We were only running about 60% success rate, so somebody could be on our waiting list for two years, then they get their voucher, and then they go out into the community and they try to find a house or an apartment and a landlord who will rent to them. And only 60% of them were successful, 40% of them were not. That is not an acceptable statistic. We want them to be more successful at that. In the last two years, we've raised that to a 70% success rate, but we're not finished. So the Board of Commissioners and the Housing Authority have now funded a position within house. It started with an ARPA grant from the city, where we have a navigator who will take these people from the time of issuance to find them a place to live, help interpret the lease, if necessary, come up with a deposit. So we're bringing that in-house, and we thank the city for having, basically, helped us build that capacity and get that program jump-started. But we also raised our payment standards considerably, so that now we can pay close-to-market rents, so we're not having people be turned away because the subsidy wasn't enough for the landlords to say yes. And we have, basically, total household, a total number of people housed out of those 1,600 vouchers is 3,593. Just so you know, 26% are elderly, 46% are disabled, and of that, 1,451 are children. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have councilmember questions? No? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I had kind of a detailed question. In your memo, you said, under the heading of Other Services, you say that although BHA is using only a 5% increase in projected budget for 2025, we anticipate a much higher increase once we have updated insurance quotes. The BHA insurance costs increased by 130% in 2024. So I'm wondering, that doesn't sound very realistic, to put a 5% increase in there if you expect it to be much higher. So what's, could you explain that, please?
And I don't have my, I know our insurance agent is working desperately. There is one CDFI that has reached out to us that is saying that they're looking at putting together a fund for housing authorities to basically pull them out of the regular insurance market pool. There are housing authorities all across the South and the coasts that have been hit by, the Southeast coast, that have been hit by hurricanes that have, are no longer carrying insurance whatsoever. If the property is damaged, they're relying on FEMA to help pay for it. But we have sold 100% of our public housing. We no longer have any public housing. We have a mortgage and debt and investors. And so we are required to have certain kinds of insurance policies. Our insurance policy, I have initially budgeted for an 18% increase, and it went up by 130%. And so for next year, honestly, I am looking at perhaps a, hoping that it will go from $775,000 to about $1,005,000. So it'll be a huge hit, but I also am going to try to work with the CDFI to see if we can get out of the regular commercial market and find alternatives to providing the insurance certificates that our investors require.
Okay, so it may just be a discrepancy between the table, where I do see a 97% increase and the figure you just mentioned. But then in the text, you say we only, we're using a 5% increase. So there's a mismatch there.
One of them came, yes, there is. One of them came from my Director of Finance, and the other one, the 97% came from me.
Okay, so the actual amount you're budgeting is the 97% increase?
Well, the Director of Finance and I will have, will have to have a meeting and a consensus on that. This year, we're doing something a little different. We are changing our fiscal year-end. So we have always had a September 30 fiscal year-end. We applied to HUD, and we are changing our fiscal year-end to December 31st. So HUD is requiring an audit for this September 30th typical year-end. And then we're going to have a three-month budget, October through December, and that will require an audit. And then we will have a 2025 budget, which we have not started on. And I think it's more realistic to look at the $1.5 million until we hear differently from CDFI.
That's my time, so thank you very much. Thanks.
Other questions on the right? Any on the left? Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open it up for public comment. If you're here and wanting to comment on this proposal, please, you can sign in by the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to comment, two minutes, sorry, two minutes to comment. And then Attorney Kula, could you also give instructions for people on Zoom?
Of course. If you are on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand, using the Reactions tab or the More tab. And if you need extra assistance, you can send a message or chat to the meeting host.
All right. I don't see anyone in chamber. Is there anyone online?
Not at the moment.
Okay, going once? All right, then in which case, we'll return to a time of council comments. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? First, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Stasberg.
I just wanted to take this opportunity, Ms. Gazunas, for thanking you, to thank you for your leadership as you'll be retiring.
Thank you, Isabel.
Thank you for your continued work in this difficult field.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say congratulations on your retirement and your grandma status, and I hope that you enjoy that. And thank you for all the things that you do. And as a new council member, this was another one of those departments where it's, I feel like it's a lot of maybe invisible stuff that doesn't always, like, people don't always know what, what is going on and what you're doing. So I'm interested in hearing more about your properties and learning more about the different properties and where they are. And I.
I have from now till the end of January to come back and visit with you if you want me to.
I'll work on that deadline. Thank you.
I'd just like to take a moment also to say that when you look at the impact on human lives, per dollar spent, it is, I mean, incredible. And I think also, it was so eye-opening to know, for the longest time, we had that 40% of vouchers unfulfilled. And so, I mean, that progress is just remarkable. And so, way to go out with a bang, really. But thank you for your leadership and everything.
At a public meeting recently, I explained to people, I really am a very big fan of heads in beds. And so the success rate was one of my most important goals while I was here, even if it were for a short time.
I'm so grateful. Any other comments? All right. Hey, we're making good pace, everybody. Thank you, Director Gazunas. We will move on then to HAND. And they will have 20 minutes. Don't forget to state your name for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Anna Killian Hansen, and it is my great pleasure to be the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development. Oh, is this on? The HAND mission is to enhance the quality of life for Bloomington residents by developing programs, services, and partnerships with public and private organizations to preserve community character, promote safe and affordable housing, and protect neighborhood vitality. Currently, in our department, we have 19 full and one-part-time employee. This includes six program managers, six compliance officers, three frontline staff rental specialists, one financial specialist, one program specialist, one assistant director, one director, and one part-time rehab specialist. Our key programs include the Title VI Code Enforcement, which tickets for trash, grass, overgrowth, and snow; Title VIII Historic Preservation; the Title XVI Rental Program, which inspects and permits the more than 30,000 rental units within the city of limits to ensure they are safe for occupancy. This also includes tenant and landlord complaint inspections as well. We administer the Title XV Unsafe Building Law, which regulates dilapidated, abandoned, or unsafe structures that are a danger to our community with orders to vacate, seal, repair, or even remove. We provide neighborhood services, which includes connecting residents and neighborhood associations with resources, assistance, and support. This includes neighborhood cleanups and neighborhood improvement grants. Fun fact, in 2023, our neighborhood cleanups collected almost 10.7 tons of trash. In addition, 2.2 tons of metal, one ton of tires, almost a half-ton of hazmat, 1.2 tons of electronics, 1.1 tons of recycling, and 3.3 tons of reusable materials that were repurposed. On average, we collect at least six tons of trash per cleanup. As an entitlement community, we work to administer a number of federal programs, including annual allocations of community development block grants and home investment partnership funds. We also administer a number of American Rescue Plan programming, including CDBGCV, HomeARP, and ARPA. We administer additional local funding sources, including CREED, ED Lit, and the Housing Development Fund. We provide housing counseling services, including support and education to homebuyers and homeowners, such as credit counseling, foreclosure avoidance, and homebuyer preparation. We also provide a number of educational programming, including Home Buyers Club and Residents Academy. Successes include implementing new policies and procedures for federal programs. We have and continue to provide rental deposit assistance, down payment and closing cost assistance, foreclosure avoidance assistance, housing counseling, and homebuyer education to a number of households. And we support numerous social service agencies in our community. This year, we are also providing support to a number of housing projects, including the development of 114 truly affordable rental units, with some serving area median incomes as low as 30% to 50% AMI. This year has been one of transition, and we have faced our share of community and departmental challenges. Like much of the nation, everyone in this room has likely been touched in some way by the temperature of the housing market. High interest rates, high market rates, low inventory, high demand. In addition, we face departmental challenges, including inadequate capacity. Some federal projects require an annual monitoring for 20 years, every time a project comes on. In addition, federal requirements have changed over time, but our capacity has not. That is why we are asking for some additional capacity in this budget. We have inadequate software and tools to meet our program needs, and until recently, inadequate policies and procedures. While we have our challenges, we also have our opportunities. I'm very excited about the opportunity to influence our housing market and improve access to affordable housing for our community through programming. We have a significant community need to address our unsheltered homeless population. By working in collaboration with affordable housing initiatives, we have an opportunity to also work towards reducing unsheltered homelessness. I am excited to increase departmental efficiencies, increase departmental capacity, reduce liability, increase transparency, and work together with community partners to truly make a difference. This year, the HAND goals are to, number one, improve access to affordable housing; number two, reduce our unsheltered homelessness; number three, increase capacity and efficiency. In 2025, our proposed budget included a 25% increase in the Personnel Service Line, which reflects the addition of two proposed new positions. In addition, the Personnel Services Line included some adjustments for benefits to existing personnel that were not accounted for correctly previously. Our Supplies Line shows a 32% decrease due to the removal of a one-time allocation upgrade iPads for compliance officers. The Other Services Line does show a 59% decrease due to the loss of ARPA and CREED funding for 2025. However, we have increased the ask of the Housing Development Fund from $476,000 in 2024 to $1.15 million this year. This Housing Development Fund increase will be used to improve access to affordable housing, which also supports and assists in the support of unsheltered homelessness initiatives. In 2015, the median house price in Bloomington was $165,000. Today, the median house price is $324,000. That's a pretty significant difference. In addition, we have more than 900 eviction cases each year, with a significant portion of them being fee-related. Bloomington, like much of the nation, is experiencing a housing crisis. Due to the numerous complications, including land scarcity and the impacts of the COVID pandemic, the demand for housing has outpaced the growth of housing development. This has caused prices to rise out of reach for homebuyers and lower-income families. Additionally, the housing stock is missing quality housing stock for middle-income households. As a result, these households are forced to either occupy lower-quality housing that would traditionally be available for low-income households, or become burdened in upper-income housing. A household is cost-burdened if it spends more than 30% of its income on housing, and severely cost-burdened if it spends 50% of its income on housing. Severe cost burden is the most common in Bloomington. The for-sale housing market has been further exasperated with higher market prices and high interest rates. The combination of limited housing supply, higher prices, and higher interest rates are yielding what's called limited buying power for homebuyers. Limited buying power is yielding a lack of opportunity for step-up housing and burdening most all price range in the market. Housing costs, high housing costs reduce economic opportunities and access to prosperity as prices in the sales and rental markets are outpacing wage growth. New unit production would help alleviate cost burden by increasing housing supply. Additional units would also mitigate competition between the city's student population and low and moderate-income households. This is why my number-one goal is to influence our market and improve access to affordable housing. The City of Bloomington's Housing Development Fund was created in 2017 to provide solutions for both affordable rental and homeownership, promoting long-term affordability. The Housing Development Fund represents a flexible, nimble, and local funding source to give grants and loans that our federal funding simply cannot do. In 2024, HAND was provided with only 95,000 in grants and 381,000 in loans from the Housing Development Fund. What we are asking for is a $674,000 increase for 2025. While we are asking for an increase in Housing Development Fund, our ED Lit request remains the same. HAND administers several down payment and closing cost assistance programs. One of the programs was created with former Mayor Hamilton, called the Shared Equity Program. This program provides up to $50,000 for down payment and closing cost assistance for qualified homebuyers. In 2024, our ED Lit down payment program allocation was $500,000. We have, to date, this year, provided five shared equity down payments in 2024. If everyone was going to spend the maximum amount of $50,000, we would only be able to help 10 people with that line. Many in our community are living paycheck to paycheck. There are very few ways for someone that may have gotten behind to get caught up on rent. Often, we must direct people to other resources for assistance with past-due rent. In many cases, some faith-based organizations can help, but many times, they offer only $350 or less. Trustees can help, but often it cannot be to. Trustees can help, but often, it cannot be to cure the full default if multiple months' rents are behind. While this does help, or these sources do help, we are all grateful that they can assist. It still leaves people scrambling. It still leaves a huge void. And we have a significant number of people at risk of becoming evicted and potentially unhoused. That is why I am proposing an eviction prevention pilot program with ED Lit funds to provide these much-needed resources to work upstream and keep people housed. Permanent supportive housing units are suffering from inadequate security. This is burdening our community and our housing partners. Many PSH properties simply do not have enough funding to provide 24/7 management. Private security is extremely expensive. We must help bolster security support for permanent supportive housing units. While my ask of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not nearly enough to address all of our needs, it is a start. Many rental units are asking for application fees of a hundred dollars, which an applicant may or may not get back if they are denied for that unit. We are also seeing more and more units asking for larger deposits upfront. Just this week, we saw a unit asking for two months of rent and a five hundred dollar deposit for the grand total of thirty-five hundred dollars upfront just to move in. While this was exorbitant, we are commonly seeing fifteen hundred dollar deposit requests from landlords. HAND currently has a rental deposit program, but it only provides five hundred dollars, which is simply not enough to cover the needs of our community. In addition, our market rate rents are quite high. This is why I'm also proposing a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar pilot with Housing Development Funds to provide tenant-based rental assistance. While some federal funds can be used for TBRA, they are not nearly nimble enough to provide the assistance we truly need. Tenant-based rental assistance is a way to provide support with the supplementation of unaffordable rent rates, utilities, application fees, and deposits. The combination of limited housing supply, higher prices, and higher interest rates are yielding limited buying power for homebuyers. The current higher interest rates and higher market rates are referred to as the golden handcuffs. People do not want to move up in price range if their buying power is limited, so they are staying put, yielding a stuck market. I want to start an interest rate buy-down program that incentivizes homeowners to step up. Even if rates come down, this could save homebuyers hundreds of dollars each month, providing more housing security. We work with CDBG and Home to provide low-income households rehabilitation services to preserve the existing housing stock. Unfortunately, many times, these programs see, this program sees months and sometimes years delay before we can help them address their issues. Sometimes, that's just simply too late. If someone gets a hole in their roof, we can't replace it without going through an extensive environmental review. That means complying with sixteen laws and authorities. I am proposing an emergency preservation fund to address those true emergencies that our federal funding is not nearly fast enough to address. We will also work to influence the market using Housing Development Fund to support new unit production. Outputs and outcomes of this goal are the creation of additional housing units, the preservation of existing units, the increased access to safe, affordable housing, improved landlord tenant education. We want to implement our pilot programs in 2025 with reevaluation of success in 2026 and continue our existing programs through the remainder of the year into 2025. My number-two goal is to reduce unsheltered homelessness. I appreciate the outreach session that you hosted recently. In addition to the Heading Home workshop, we heard our community loud and clear. Our housing market, directly or indirectly, is influencing our rise in unsheltered homelessness. While my top two goals are not the same, they are linked arm-in-arm together. This is why my ask from Goal One and Goal Two are one and the same, the six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase request for the Housing Development Fund. This addresses both. As you can see in this table, many of my requests support each other. Regardless of the budget, budget requests will continue to support our partners, such as Heading Home and the South Central Indiana Housing Network, as best as we can. My third goal is to increase capacity and efficiency. I have been through far too many HUD audits in the last twelve months. One thing has become clear: We do not have enough capacity to be compliant or be compliant well. There have been far too many regulation changes or program needs without change to our capacity. We need to do things correctly, and we need to do it well, and that means more help with our federal compliance. In addition, we have increased burdens on rental inspectors and compliance officers. We've had a lot of Title VI violations that need attention recently, and more units year after year to inspect. More capacity would help significantly in that effort. We also have insufficient report-writing software and insufficient tools. The more efficient we can become and the more we can implement technology, the better that we will be able to do our jobs. We are kindly asking for the addition of two positions: a compliance officer or rental inspector, and a grant compliance manager. This increases our request for, of our personnel line by a hundred and sixty-four thousand. If these positions were approved, that would mean an additional seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars for the new position supplies, such as computers and desks. We are also asking for an additional three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for training opportunities as well. By increasing capacity and efficiency, we can increase transparency, reduce wait times, reduce liability, and increase compliance. Can you imagine trying to decipher an inspection report without a photo of a condition? We can eliminate this confusion that we often provide to our rental program. We can address inspections quickly. We can preserve our ability to receive new grant opportunities. I hope to have these new positions and new software implemented in early 2025. With these requests, this brings our total budget request to four million three hundred and sixty, not, I can't talk, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Our HUD funding year runs from June 1st to May 31st, so we actually have just begun our 2024 program year. This year, we have received seven hundred and ninety-five thousand in CDBG and five hundred and sixty-five thousand in Home. We will continue to utilize these funds to support Goals One and Two. In conclusion, our goals and budget proposal allow us to increase access to safe and affordable housing and simultaneously support reduction of unsheltered homelessness. Our budget also allows us to improve efficiency, capacity, and compliance, yielding a stronger, better department to respond to our housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll first pass to Councilmember Zulik for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. It sounds like you guys are doing very cool programs. Could you please talk about the qualifications that someone might need to qualify for the rental assistance pilot, the eviction prevention, and the interest rate buy-down?
So, we have not sussed out those program details yet, but we hope to have that done sometime in the next few months.
Okay. And when, where might someone go about finding that information once it's available?
Well, we hope to publicize it widely. I think that we would anticipate sharing that with a lot of our housing partners, putting it on our website, and then promoting it as well.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stasberg, then, Rallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Killian Hansen, for that presentation. And I also just want to make a note for my fellow councilmembers that I emailed some questions to her earlier, and I have, she answered those, and I've added them to that shared document in Google with the questions and the answers. I wanted to ask you about the Housing Development Fund for a minute, just so I make sure that we're talking about the right thing. That is the Affordable Housing Fund, right, that developers pay into when they want to get the affordable housing incentive without actually offering affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay, great. Do you know, or does maybe the controller know, the current balance of that account?
I know that it was north of three point six, and we're in-
Three point six million?
It was north of that the last time I checked, and I do believe that we are anticipating a few larger payments as well coming soon.
Thank you. That was basically the only question that I had during the presentation. I will have more in comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thanks for all the good work that you do, very favorable to your budget. But I wanted to ask some of these questions just for information purposes, because I think it's been kind of widely observed that we're in a distorted housing market, and a lot of the distortions have to do with financialization. That is, housing is a financial product. And so, and I realize that municipalities like ours, there's very little we can do about it, not the least in part because of the state, State House. But one thing that has continually perplexed me is regarding the occupancy of large multifamily apartment buildings. HAND inspects these rental units every three years? Is that right, cycling?
It's dependent upon condition, so it could be three, four, or five years.
Three, four, or five years. So you do so on a regular basis. And do you inspect every unit in these buildings?
I believe so.
Okay. So you could note, or do you know whether a unit is occupied?
That's really hard to say, because sometimes, we inspect them when they're vacant for summers or that. I will say that anecdotally, that it has been said that our rental units are around ninety percent, unless a property comes online in the middle of a rental cycle. So if we're seeing a new construction building come online, like in August, when most students would be moving in, those would be slower to lease up. But it's approximately around ninety percent.
So unfortunately, we just have anecdotes. And I've heard any occupancy rates between thirty to eighty to ninety percent. I do note that certain buildings at night seem to have no lights on. So either people go to bed at before, you know, in the winter months before 6:00 PM, and leave their lights out, or they're not occupied. And so, this is something I'd still like to drill down to, to, to try to figure out. So do we have data on how many homes are being purchased by, in Bloomington, by private equity firms? How many are owned or being purchased by them?
We do not. That is something that's fairly difficult to track down, especially when they're being recorded as LLC owners. They could be out of state. So I know that previously, we did try to track that down, but it is rather difficult. I also want to bring your attention to one of our efforts that maybe I didn't highlight this evening is a housing plan. And Dave, I'm with you. We need to know the numbers. We need to make data-driven decisions. So in our housing plan, we're hoping to survey our apartment and multifamily complexes to provide the data that you're asking.
Okay, my time's expired, but just suffice to say, we're in a bubble, and bubbles finally find pins. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stasberg?
Thanks for that presentation. There's a lot there and a lot in your budget. I just wanted to ask about the, sorry, I have just so many things open. The pilot for an interest rate buy-down program, and if you have details to share on that right now, like how big it might be?
We don't know yet. So there are a number of lenders in town that allow these interest rate buy-downs. For instance, German-American offers something called a two-one buy-down. That's a temporary buy-down, which that allows somebody to have a lower interest rate for only two to three years, expecting them to refinance at the end of that, right? So that is an option. There's also a permanent buy-down, which is essentially like buying points. That's much more expensive to do, but it's a permanent affordability situation. So these are the things that we really have not had time to suss out at this point, but we will. We will identify that. But my goal would be to try to have a couple of different options. My thought in incentivizing it is that, look, sellers don't want to sell. There's nothing for them to move to, especially if they're paying a higher interest rate, right? So we can say to them that we'll buy you down your interest rate right now. If you sell this house affordably between X and X price to this AMI person, then we would be able to encourage that turnover and promote true affordability.
I think that's really neat. That's, it's very much like the affordable chairs of the housing world. I also like that you come to us with a budget that has pilot programs in it. This is not a question, I'm sorry. But I just think a lot of budgets are sort of like lacking that, let's try some new things for 2025. But I like that you're doing it with a sense of urgency and that, yeah, you're like, we're going to kind of like throw this out there and see what happens. So appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Housing Action Plan you mentioned, this is one of the, like, community, community action plans as mentioned, is the high-level goal for the mayor's priorities, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
In the intro. What kind of time scale in terms of, like, plan horizons? Like, is it a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, a one-year plan?
I think it needs to be a long-term plan. I mean, we're trying to develop it at this point. We've had limited ability or capacity to do so, but I kind of know the general direction that it needs to go. My thought is that it needs to be likely five years. I think five years is a good middle-of-the-road number. We can kind of predict that market changes will happen somewhere between three and five years. I mean, most homebuyers prior to this time, prior to COVID, used to move every three to five years. That's since changed, so I think five years is a really good average to try and see what's going on. And I also am a fan of reevaluation annually. I think there's far too many plans that don't get reevaluated.
Great. So it's under development now, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Have any councilmembers been, like, formally involved in the, in the plan development, or would they be?
Well, you're more than welcome. We're not done yet. I will say that we've been conducting our consolidated plan outreach sessions, and we've sent all of this information to you all. I haven't seen any of you at any of our meetings, but that would, we're taking a lot of the public input that we're receiving from those meetings and incorporating them into our plan.
Got it. So I think of, like, the transportation plan, which is another kind of, we'll get more in the weeds, maybe five-year time horizon needs updating. We formally adopted that as part of the comprehensive plan. Would you be open to the same for the Housing Action Plan? We do, of course, have a housing chapter in the comprehensive plan with goals very similar to the goals in your budget, like increasing housing supply, affordable housing. Is that something you think we should do?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, we also have our consolidated plan, which is very similar to an affordable housing plan as well, and it also addresses homelessness. So they all sort of overlap. I would like them to be pretty cohesive together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pima Smith?
Yes, I had a question about, well, I just want to double-check one thing. So the Housing Development Fund, is that only funded by the payment in lieu from the developers? Okay. My bigger question, and I'm sure you're not surprised at this, is about unhoused folks who are being removed from encampments, or, you know, the encampments are being shut down, and they have nowhere to go. I mean, they just go to somewhere else where the same problems then crop up. And I don't expect a silver bullet or an easy answer to this, but has your department looked into other options that we can implement very quickly? Either a single-room occupancy building, or a sanctioned camping site, or at least a place where people can park their cars and be safe? Can you speak to that at all?
I most certainly have. I actually looked at a single-room occupancy potential project on Friday of last week.
So are any of the other options being considered for immediate needs of people who are unsheltered?
My department hasn't been as much involved, but I think collaboratively as a city, we are trying to figure out now what.
Okay. All right. Well, look forward to working with you all on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Daley, any questions?
Okay. In which case, I'm going to open up for questions from, I'm sorry, comments from the general public. If you're in council chambers and would like to make a comment, please, you know the drill. You've signed in, tell us who you are, and you can make comments. But Deputy, I mean, Attorney Kulak, could you say the same for the folks online?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and you'd like to comment, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab, or the more tab, or send a chat to the meeting host. We do have someone with their hand raised, Deborah Meyerson.
Fantastic. We'll go to you, Ms. Meyerson. Can they hear us?
Okay, I got the, thank you. This is Deborah Meyerson. I'm a resident of the city and work in housing policy, actually have most recently been a subcontractor with the prime consultant who's facilitating the public meetings that Ms. Killian Hansen mentioned. the public meetings that Ms. Killian Hansen mentioned for the consolidated plan and analysis of impediments for fair housing choice. I just wanted to say, I am really excited about this budget. I really appreciate the ambition and innovation that is in this budget, to try new things, and just really to understand that we... There's not one thing that's going to solve the housing needs of the city, but it's important to keep trying, and to evaluate what's worked and what hasn't, and to keep moving forwards. So I really appreciate the elements that Ms. Killian Hansen has brought into this, whether it's interest buy-down, the tenant-based rental assistance would be terrific, because Section 8 vouchers have limitations, even though that's an important resource. This would be an important supplement to that. So I really appreciate councilmembers' questions and interest in what the HAND budget has to offer, and just really want to encourage you to keep looking at that, to come to the... There's two more public workshops and one more public meeting on Tuesday night at Tri-North Middle School at 6:00 PM, also available virtually, and to stay engaged and curious about how we continue to work together on advancing housing security and stability for people in our community.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We have a comment in chambers, and then if there's somebody else online, we'll go there. State your name for the record, please.
I'm Randy Cassidy, and speaking in two capacities in regards to the housing and what we know we all have to do in here, but more importantly, we all know the issues that occur, I want to talk to the quality and the ability that has been put forth by Ms. Hansen and her group in regards to looking at this from a holistic standpoint, and the actual needs that have to be done in our community, and how she's looked at doing things, her and her entire group, to make things better for our community as a whole. Budgets are tough, you guys have lots of tough decisions, but the way this has been laid out seems to be something that is, will be extremely beneficial. So I appreciate your consideration on this, and I greatly appreciate how things have been put forth. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there any other questions online?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Any other question, I'm sorry, comments in the chamber? Right, seeing none, I will come back to my colleagues, and we'll start with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you. I am also excited about some of the things in the budget for HAND, and some new ideas that are being pursued. There are so many aspects of affordability that we haven't really tried to address in the past, the down payment, or the deposit for renters, the things that the vouchers don't cover, the fact that people don't want to sell because they're the interest rates, and there's no place to move to. So this is... I really appreciate what Ms. Killian Hansen has brought forward. Of course, I'm also concerned about, you know, the immediate needs of people who are unsheltered, because that is a big issue in my district and in many parts of the city. And I think this is, it's great that you're investigating possible single-room occupancy building, and possible, you know, that would have to be staffed, and that would have to be funded somehow. But for me, that's a very high priority, and I think that your additional staff also will enable your whole department to take on more and do better at the things that you're already charged with as well. So I'm happy to support the positions as well.
We have a housekeeping comment from the clerk.
Just a reminder for councilmembers and for members of the public, if you're at the microphone, to actually speak into it directly, because it's very hard to hear. Thank you.
Rosenberger?
I have a comment. It's a little more general, but it... The HAND budget really got me thinking. So like I said, I do appreciate, I think this budget is very thoughtful and forward-moving. I think that there are pieces of this that are going to be enacted in 2025, and I think that's actually looking like sort of rare in our other departmental budgets, that the city is taking actions in 2025, and it has just made me really think that, like, I know we had a new administration on January 1, but we did not have a new city on January 1, and we have so many plans in place, and we have so many projects already in motion that I feel like have been put on pause this year to get to know everything, and then next year is turning into more of like, let's study it. So I just think, I guess this HAND budget, right, it's got pilot programs, right, where I wish with parks, we were piloting porta-pots in parks. I wish with public works, we were piloting edible food arrangements in our... Where we put flowers, right? With planning, I wish we were doing some like pop-up bike lanes and maybe traffic calming, and different speed limits. But this is really the only budget that I've seen that is just sticking things out there and trying them, and I just really appreciate that. I also am just having a hard time in general with the budget, with the citywide goals that are new to the administration. I mean, I guess these are internal goals, but what we have, and what we as a council presented in our memo, is ways to move forward in our climate action plan, and our transportation plan, which was adopted into our comprehensive plan, which our council and administration and resident agreed on goals, right, created by this community for the community. And so, I just, I... It gives me pause to have these citywide goals that the administration has made, but like, in the current budget, the way it's written, we're not seeing connections to our community-wide agreed-upon goals. So that was a little more like high-level, but it's just that the HAND budget really like brought that to the forefront for me. So again, I appreciate the actions for HAND, because, I mean, unhoused and our lack of affordable housing is such a crisis, that, I mean, we do need to be doing things every day and immediately, and I feel the same way about public safety and sanitation and the like. So thank you.
Am I allowed to respond to that?
You have 40 seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say that our CDBG funding round that will be opening this October, and I don't know if you know, but city departments can apply for a variety of projects, which maybe those porta-potties would qualify for, so...
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're going to go Rallo, then Zulik, then Daley, then Flaherty.
May I ask a question?
No. Make it as a comment, and see.
I'll respond.
Do anything you want. Go ahead.
All right, perhaps you would like to answer this comment. Anyway, thank you for your good work, Director Killian Hansen, and I appreciate it all, and I'm very favorable to your budget. So back to this financialization problem. How do we protect our housing stock? The typical county commissioners, Lafayette and West Lafayette passed an ordinance to restrict Airbnbs. We could do that, it seems to me, to relieve some housing pressure. What say you?
I agree, and I actually believe that I'll be back in front of you this fall with something very similar. Because, I mean, right now, we have almost 800 Airbnbs within our community, and 80% of them are whole houses. That's a pretty significant number.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I just want to say, it's, as a renter, it's really exciting to see some pro-renter policies, and I look forward to seeing how the pilot program goes. And also, please let me know when that goes live, because I would love to talk to my constituents about it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. I don't have anything profound to add, I just want to acknowledge that you have a heck of a lot on your plate, and I recognize that, and I see you, and thank you very much for all of the hard work. I think this is an ambitious and exciting budget, and I think it has the potential to have one of the greatest impacts on Bloomington in the most profound and exciting way. So thank you, and I am behind you 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation, for your department and all their work. I wanted to share more thoughts in the vein of what Councilmember Rosenberg shared, and I shared last night, actually, about these action plans for community priorities and goals related to them, and just process concerns about kind of the road we're headed down so far. I did receive the invitations, like we all did, for outreach sessions and the like, that I think are general for the public. I appreciate that, and I'm well aware we can attend those, often constrained by jobs or other meetings, to doing so. And I just think that's very different than coming to the council and saying, we'd like you to designate a member of your team to be part of this process, to help us set goals, establish what we're doing, figure out whether this should go into the comprehensive plan, whether it should lead to amendments to the comprehensive plan, which should very much be a living document, and not something that's set in stone. It shares, like I said, some elements of the goals you have in your departmental budget, what I imagine will be in the Housing Action Plan, that's in development. They're probably in line, but there's also reference of UDO changes, for instance, that may conflict with other comprehensive plan goals. We should be mindful of the formerly adopted plans that have gone through the very broad-based resident outreach and an approval process through the co-equal but different branches of government. And so, I'm going to keep asking questions about this and keep reiterating that I really think we need to change course a little bit, and course-correct on the development of the goals, priorities, and action plans that the administration is bringing forward, so that they are collaborative, and they are co-produced in a meaningful way. And then again, as appropriate, formally adopted. We have a transportation plan that is formally part of a comprehensive plan. It's more work on the front end, but again, these are values that I think we all share, and it's better, because then we have alignment. So when you come to us with a request, we don't say, well, where this is coming from, or like, we don't agree with that goal, because if we didn't agree with it, the time to try to change that was in the development process, in the approval process. I think in general, as a council, we do a pretty good job of getting behind the things that we do approve, even if we don't agree with every line of them, because it's broader and bigger than that. And so I think that's what Councilmember Rosenberg was speaking to, and I just really hope that we can, yeah, make some shifts on that front. I think the plans are good ideas, also, by the way. I think, like, we need plans, and, you know, there's a list of programs and things called out in the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, some of which would be in line, again, with probably what you're exploring. So I think we just really need to be thinking about these as interactive, and be thinking about each other as partners in getting to where we need to go. Thank you.
I will tell you that our housing plan, we have looked at the comprehensive plan. We're looking at the housing study of 2020. We're looking at the ROI update. So we're taking a compilation of all the plans and putting them together. I would love to have an opportunity to meet with everyone and get their input as well. I'm certainly not excluding you from that.
Thank you. Excuse me, and thank you for the presentation and all the information. And I also am really excited about a lot of aspects of this budget, and I'm going to call out a couple, and partly in response to what Councilmember Flaherty just talked about with the housing part of the comprehensive plan, because I remember reading that relatively recently, and I actually met with you over the summer about some affordable housing-related stuff and related to the UDO. And one of the ways that I think that your current planning supports the comprehensive plan are through those Housing Development Fund programs with the rental-based tenant assistance, and I think that... I don't have time in the next two and a half minutes to talk about fully the ways that I think that we need to change the UDO in order to support that more, but part of the comprehensive plan with housing talks about wanting to make sure that there's affordable housing everywhere in Bloomington, and not just all stuck in one place. And things like this tenant-based rental assistance programs, the interest rate buy-down, like, those are things that can support that goal, so that you're not just building affordable housing over here and expecting everybody to live over here who needs affordable housing, but you're saying like, okay, pay into this affordable housing fund, developers, and accept these vouchers from our system in the future, and so then we can get some affordable housing a little bit everywhere, all over, supported by this, by the HDF, and supported by this programming. So I'm really excited that that is in this budget, and I think that we did not, during question time, call out any of this UDO change stuff that you said, and changes with affordability and changes with housing types, but that is also work that I'm... You know, we've been talking about that concept, I think several councilmembers have been talking about this concept of what exactly, and with planning staff, and what exactly does the UDO need in order to support what it is that Bloomington needs. And so I'm really excited that there's some programming specifically in the HAND budget this year that supports some of those needs, and I'm looking forward to making sure that all of our documents are also in alignment with making sure that we get what we need, and also in alignment with the comprehensive plan, and with the transportation plan, and with all of those plans, which I also think are super-duper important to continue following and keeping in mind because of the things that Councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenberg said about them. So thank you very much.
I'll just add my comments first by saying thank you for the wonderful presentation, also for answering the questions that we sent ahead of time. I'd like to, sort of, in thinking about some of the things that my colleagues have said, say how grateful I am that, you know, when we've said, hey, you know, we'd like to be involved, that the response is, yay, be involved. And so, you know, we're very eager to continue working with you and helping, I think most importantly, in any way that would be of value added, to make these processes better, and to support the incredible work that you're doing. I'd also like to say, I think that, thinking forward, you know, thinking about next year as we move more completely to an outcome-based budget, I asked, one of the questions that I had asked previously was, you know, can you show us that this is a right-sized budget, right? And, you know, it's easy to interpret that through our sort of past lens by saying, well, the question that I'm asking is, what can we cut from your budget? But I actually think that there's a very strong argument with the way that you presented things, that it's like, actually, maybe you don't get enough money. And I think that that's the, you know, I think that that's the reason why we need to move to an outcome-based budget, so that we start from the perspective of what's the best we can do, rather than, you know, how do we, you know, squeeze more and more, so it's sort of what do we want in, rather than what do we want to keep? And I think that's a very important question for us moving forward. But again, just wanted to reiterate the fact that, you know, in sort of all capacities, very, very happy to help. I think all of us have said that very clearly, and so you will certainly get more of that in the days here to come. Did anybody... Okay, Piedmont Smith, go ahead.
I just, if I may, make a point of clarification. There's been talk about comprehensive plan and consolidated plan.
Yes.
Can we clarify what those two are and how they're different?
The consolidated plan is a five-year spending plan for HUD. It's required for us to be a participating jurisdiction. So our plan is due next year, and we have consultants that are working on it. That's what this public outreach is all about, but it's a five-year spending plan. Also, why a five-year housing plan might work as well. Also what? Why the five-year housing plan would probably work as well, because the timing lines up.
And the comprehensive plan is a document that is... Was created and passed in 2018 that is about how we envision our whole community developing in the next 10 years, and that usually is done through Planning and Transportation Department.
That is correct.
And that is not currently being updated.
No.
I just wanted to make sure people understood. And one other thing, since a few of my colleagues have mentioned this, the questions that were... The written questions that we are submitting to staff and that are being answered by staff outside of this public arena will be compiled into a document and put online on the council website, so that everybody will be able to see that, those question and answers as well.
Question for Councilmember Piedmont Smith about that. Is there... What is the deadline for councilmembers to submit questions, and for department heads to submit answers, and for that to get published publicly?
The deadline for councilmembers is noon on Tuesday, September 3. I think that we haven't put a deadline on the administration. I think they're already looking at those documents and are working as quickly as they can to get the answers up, so I expect by the end of next week, we will have something on our website with questions and answers.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did I miss any comments? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Director Killian Hansen. We will move on now to planning and transportation. Don't forget to speak into the microphone, say your name for everybody to know forever, public record. You have 20 minutes.
Good evening. David Hiddle, Director of the Department of Planning and Transportation, here to share with you our proposed budget for 2025. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Let's see here, okay. Let's see here, okay. Planning and Transportation guides the form and function of Bloomington's built environment by regulating land use and development, managing long-term planning and visioning initiatives, and coordinating regional transportation planning efforts, and we do that with 16 FTE staff. And we do that through the form of three primary programs, each of which corresponds to one of the elements of the purpose statement above. So guiding the form and function of the built environment by regulating land use and development is handled by the Development Services Department, managed by Jackie Scanlon. Managing of the long-term planning and visioning initiatives is part and parcel to what Planning Services does, managed by Ryan Rubling. And then the coordinating of regional transportation planning efforts is what we get from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as the NPO, which is governed really by two different committees and staffed by two of our employees in Planning and Transportation. Rather than put together a laundry list of successes, which I think we could do, I kind of just grabbed four different success stories, if you will, that maybe symbolize or represent kind of the diversity of activities and engagements that the department is involved with, just to kind of show the four corners of what we do. So first, we have the finalization of the city's largest planned unit of development, the Summit PUD, which will be, Lord willing, on the southwest side of town. It's 40, rather, 140 acres, 4,200 proposed units to be developed over a 10-year time period. It was a tremendous amount of heavy lifting, mostly borne by the capable shoulders of Jackie Scanlon. It's a very complex project, went through a lot of hearings, and safe to say that everyone involved, I think, is happy to see that it is done, and we look forward to seeing it be realized and actually put on the earth. We did maintain staffing through the year, mostly. We had a retirement, we had two internal shifts, and we had one person transition to the private sector, but otherwise, everybody stayed, which is great, because the documents we deal with, the UDO, other documents and tools of the trade are extremely complex. And so it's wonderful to get every bit of time under the belt that we can for our employees. It's a steep learning curve, and you're really not very much up to speed until you've been there for a good year, year and a half, maybe even two years, and that's when you really hit stride. So we're glad to see that we were able to maintain staffing. I did embolden the word "staff" because I feel awfully fortunate to have inherited this group. There's a lot of talent, there's a lot of smarts, there's, I think, a real strong penchant for public service across the hall over there, and I'm just really happy about that. Just a couple other things. Behind the scenes, some of the folks that do the dirty work that you don't hear very much about, I'll just mention our UDO enforcement staff, that's Jennifer Burrell and Joy Brown. They've done something that I've not seen done very often, and I've worked in enforcement for zoning ordinances in a lot of different places, but they've kind of hit the sweet spot in terms of messaging, so that when you've done something wrong, if you're the guy who's scrapping appliances in your backyard and the neighbor complains, and we go and say, "Yes, you are scrapping appliances, and you shouldn't do that," they've kind of struck the balance between letting them know that you absolutely have to fix this, and we're here to actually help you achieve that end. The resolution of the violation is the important thing, not the penalty, not the fee, there's no revenue that we're interested in, we just want to see the thing fixed. It's hard to do that, but these two, I think, have managed to do that in the way that they communicate with complainers and with violators. Again, dirty work, not very shiny, but it's wonderful when it's done well, and so it's great that they've done that. And they have a resolution rate approaching 90% over the past year since they've both been with us, so we've kind of fully staffed that ship, which is a good thing. Another thing as far as successes, again, tiny part of the budget, but just worth mentioning because you might not otherwise hear about it, but we have a mini-grant program administered through the Bike and Ped Commission and managed by our own Hank Duncan. This is just one of the recipients of the mini-grant. So the Monroe County Community School Corporation has an adult education program that just started, and this is a brand-new program where they will make available to students bikes. You can borrow them for free and get back and forth, and it's just a wonderful thing, as is this. This is the Club Riders Program from the Boys and Girls Club, also a recipient of a mini-grant, where they are able to help the kids get their bikes in tip-top shapes, learn how to maintain them, learn how to ride properly, get familiar with the school's bicycle infrastructure. It's things like these that plant little seeds. I know maybe a few of you are Strong Towns appreciators, as am I. One of their, right out of their playbook is the idea of making small bets on your town, and where those small bets are able to engage at the grassroots level and incorporate innovation and great ideas from the people, as these programs both do. They tend to bear fruit, and so it's just neat to see, so I share them here because you might not know about them otherwise. Current challenges, we have a few. One of them is getting up to snuff with our current primary workflow platform, which is kind of the universe through which all of our processes flow, all of our cases come and go through there. We work on them through there, and we share them with other staff and other departments, and petitioners, applicants, the public, and there's a little bit of work to do there, which I'll talk about a little bit later. We also want to improve staff retention and development. We need to balance our organizational chart in a few different ways, most of them modest, but we have an opportunity to, I think, revision one of our positions to make it better fit our needs, and we plan on doing that. Opportunities, our legion, I'm new here, I've worked here for five months, I've lived here for four months, and so I kind of think that I bring an objectivity, which is an advantage. I can see things with fresh eyes, and possibilities and opportunities are just stacked on top of each other, as I can see it here. And one of those things is the fact that people here have a real passion for Bloomington, like, the level of allegiance is different than I've seen in other places. And there's a real strong desire to see good decisions made on behalf of the city, and with that comes a level of accountability that is, in many ways, refreshing. You need to make, you need to do the right thing, and you need to work and show other people that decisions that you're making are in the best interest. And that's a wonderful challenge, I think, to have as a director and to have for my staff, So we come forward with three goals, and mind you, these are aside from what we do on a day-to-day basis, which is provide information to decision-makers, the best possible information to the council, to the Plan Commission, to the VZA, to our commissions and the committees that we staff. It's act as an information clearinghouse for developers, for the public, for anybody who has any concerns or questions about zoning or planning, and then to make plans, to write studies, to accommodate the planning needs of the moment. But these three things kind of emerge as necessary for now and for the coming year. So number one is to optimize work processes. Number two is to implement the SS4A, Safe Streets for All, is what that is acronymed as, PLAN, and then to adapt to changing housing needs, and we'll take each of those in turn. First, the budget. So for Personnel Services, for Supplies, they're pretty much static. We right-size our supplies a little bit. And then for Other Services, you'll see a big bump from 291 last year to 877 this year. We're actually going to pare down that number to take to the final hearing, and there's also some kind of disclaimers and qualifying statements to provide to make that make more sense, which I'll talk about through the duration of this presentation. Okay, that's just kind of the same thing but in narrative form. So to talk about optimizing work processes, the first bullet point there is to provide staff with excellent tools and resources, and as director, I think I deserve a C for that so far. As I mentioned, we have a software platform that is not completely getting the job done for us. I do have hope. We are working very diligently with ITS to make it work. In many ways, they're learning the program at the same time we are, and we're rebuilding many of our workflow processes from the ground up, and they've taken the time, quite a bit of time, to meet with us on a very regular basis to make that happen. So we've got a good pledge from all of our staff to give it a good faith effort to make it work, and the same from ITS, so I am hopeful that we can improve that. And that's important, because like I said, from that, everything flows, everything that we do. If we need to look up something and provide information to people who are calling in, if we need to have communication with the Monroe County Building Department, which is de facto our building department, we go through that system, so it's important that it works well. With that, will come increased permit processing efficiency, inquiry, response time, and these are things that I'm hearing as a director, meeting people, the development community, folks who are willing to share their thoughts of the performance of the department are in need of shoring up. And so that's something that we are doing, and a little bit more about that as well. Increasing public education and outreach is really, I encourage staff to do that as well, but so far, I've been meeting with the neighborhood groups and the Builders Association one-on-one, and in small groups, and even in large groups, and hearing a lot of ideas and concerns that we're taking to heart and working to incorporate into what we do. And I've heard many say that that's a refreshing approach in that they might not have expected that in the past, so I'm thankful that that has been working out well. So budget impact with regards to work processes, it's really a matter of refining existing internal processes, so there's not much budget impact, although I am very keen on helping staff, encouraging staff to engage in staff education, ongoing instruction, which I'm thankful they're also very ambitious in wanting to do, and I'm glad that we're going to deplete that fund pretty soon this year, and so we're asking for a little bit more for next year. With regards to work processes, so we did, I did assign specific outputs or outcomes, their placeholders. What I want to do is get with staff and more formally establish what these are going to be. I think if I do that with them, there's going to be more buy-in to holding to them. But they're going to look like this. We're going to establish a two-day expedited process for permits that are not needing as deep a review as others, 10-day standard processing and 24-hour inquiry response. So they're kind of standard customer service metrics that we don't really have in place now, but will be in place after conferring with staff. Okay, so we'll move on to goal number two, and that is to implement the SS4A Plan. Those numbers, I think, probably look familiar to a lot of you, but those, the first one, 13,626 is the number of crashes that occurred in Bloomington. This is a timeframe of 2018 to 2022. 756 of those involve serious injury, life-altering injury, and 14 of those involve fatality. The council did adopt a resolution earlier this year that is going to shoot for a goal of zero fatality and serious injuries by the year 2039. The way we get there is through the Safe Streets for All Action Plan, which is in process now and will be completed before the end of the year, will be adopted as a part of the Comprehensive Plan and the Transportation Plan, and will guide transportation improvements heretofore with the primary goal of safety. It will establish policies and priorities in general terms and looking at specific projects that I think we need. We haven't had that in a very, with much specificity heretofore, so I think that'll be a very big thing. Safe Streets for All is the federal funding mechanism, part of the bipartisan infrastructure project. It runs through 2026 and perhaps beyond, and it provides billions of dollars for local transportation improvement projects. Once we complete this action plan at the end of the year, that opens up availability of application to implementation plans, or actually, implementation projects, starting next year and then the year after, which results in actual things being built, which is where we obviously need to be. This is a cutout from the Transportation Plan. I circled the corridor study, it's the Atwater East Third Corridor Study, simply because it's next on the list. Right above it is the Walnut College Corridor Study, which we're doing now, and which we hope to have completed before too very long. But this is indication of what we would be doing likely next year, one of these corridor studies more than likely, depending on what the action plan guides us to do. In general terms, for the initial years of this action plan, once adopted, we're going to concentrate on lots of lower-budget, high-impact projects, and then in the later years, you'll encounter larger, higher-cost projects. And additionally, I think that the first part of that is salient as well. Specific outcomes are going to be built into the plan, the action plan, which will be adopted in 2024. So those outcomes are sort of on track to be being completed and brought forth by the end of the year. So I mentioned that there will be lower-budget, multiple, high-impact projects that will be taking place starting next year. This is an example of one, it's just a speed panel. Another one, which I think is a little more complex and tells a little bit more of a story, but it's simply paint and a few physical items that completely transform the dynamic of an intersection that was otherwise built to accommodate as comfortably as possible cars and other vehicles. Here, it's completely transformed, again, with relatively low effort to accommodate people. So this is a kind of, usually, a pilot project, sometimes a more permanent project, but it's done, and it helps neighborhoods experience an actual change without putting the money into the change, and it makes it a little bit more palatable if there are concerns about how improvements might be realized in a specific project. Similar here, I understand traffic circles haven't been the most popular things in Bloomington so far, but this is an example, very low-cost, quick implementation, put it in the ground, give the neighborhood a chance to work with it, to see how it works, and then you make the decision as to whether or not to make it permanent. Goal number three is to adapt to evolving housing needs, and really, we're talking about adapting the UDO to evolving housing needs. Anna went through a lot of these numbers here. They all just point to the fact that we have a local affordable housing crisis, and I won't go over them additionally. There's a lot of reasons for that. There's a lot of factors that conspire to give us this crisis, but we want to make sure that the Unified Development Ordinance is not one of those reasons. So we're looking at it in a number of different ways. I think we want to consider immediate amendments, and the council has put forth a list of proposed UDO amendments that would have a lot to do with, in one sense, trimming the fat, in another sense, just removing unreasonable restrictions on the development of housing, which we are working with the council on and hope to bring forward soon. So actually, a lot of this will be kind of far down this road before the year is even over, hopefully. And then I think it's worthwhile to consider longer term, if we're going to transition from conventional Euclidean zoning, which is the zoning that took place, began to take place in the middle of the century and dominated until more recently. Right now, we have a hybrid form-based code with elements of Euclidean zoning, which is segregated land use, sort of exclusive zoning. It's a sea change, and so I think that the best we can do at this moment is to strike up the conversation as to what form-based codes might look like, and I don't think I'm going to get very far in the remaining 20 seconds, but anyway, that's one of the things that I think would be wonderful to see happen this coming year. I did want to note that with regards to the much larger 877,000 Other Services figure...
I'll yield my time to you, so you can take three more minutes, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll be quicker than that, but thank you. One of them is a linkage study that we anticipated, our early intel suggested this thing would be... thing would cost about $250,000. And we've learned subsequently that it could cost probably between 100 and 150. So we'd be tapering that figure by at least $100,000. Also, the SS4A corridor studies, we'd do one for sure. And if things happen, ideally, we could do two next year. Would be subject to an 80% match from federal money. So although we would be required to put out the full, the full fee, maybe 200, maybe $250,000 at the, at the beginning, we'd be reimbursed 80% from the federal government. And then, there's another bigger ticket item, a $75,000 item, which was potentially to have been a digital twin project, which we want to do with G I S, which they have indicated they will bear the cost burden for, for next year. We may be sharing in that cost in 2026, because it's something we really want to see happen, but we won't have to do it next year. So all that to say, that big number is being tapered and will be brought back to a smaller number come final budget hearing time. And I think that's it.
Fantastic. Do I have questions? I'll start on my left. Pete Mosby?
Yes, thank you. That was a lot right at the end. Thank you and welcome for your first budget presentation. I had some questions, just to clarify a few items. And let me get to the right document. So when you say you want to identify 30% of incoming permit applications as expedited, is that, on what basis would you determine that one should be expedited? Just the simplicity of it? Or if it's like for affordable housing, will it be expedited? Or what's the...
It's more the former, the simplicity. Right now, we have them come in and they all stay in a, in a virtual waiting room until the next planner available to take it, takes it. But there are plenty that are simply interior remodels, or decks, or literally simple cases that we can identify immediately, take out, and get through them much more quickly.
Okay, thank you. And then, what is a digital twin model for the downtown area? What is it?
It's 3D modeling. Megan Blair is the city's G I S manager, and she's kind of championing this effort.
So...
I think, to respond in writing, I'll be more accurate and probably do a better job of telling the story. But it's essentially what it sounds like. You're depicting the city and you're, you're sort of, you're craft casting the city in a, in a 3D model. And it helps, you know, on a simpler level, for things like the Walnut, the College Walnut Corridor Study. If we're revisioning intersections, how traffic will flow, how pedestrians will flow, what the bike lanes might look like, if we're able to make that in a 3D format, and it'll be hyper-realistic, it'll be truly down to the inch exactly what would be built. People are able to appreciate the idea better and to understand, have a better understanding of what might be.
Gotcha. I want to squeeze in one more question if I...
Yeah, sorry.
You're going to commission a linkage fee study to address affordable housing demand induced by large-scale market rate projects. Sorry, I'm a layperson. I don't understand the correlation between market-based projects inducing the need, the fees, or what is that?
Yeah, this is, the linkage study is actually called for by the U D O. It's, we haven't done it yet. We haven't created this study yet, but it's called for. So we're sort of completing an unfinished piece of business for the U D O. And I put, I put this together with pretty precise, because the language is precise. I'm just going to read it. So the linkage study identifies the need for affordable housing that will be induced by specific major non-commercial projects.
I'm sorry, that's, that's my time. I'm going to have to get the rest in writing later.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. On the right, Councilmember Erella.
Thank you, Director Hiddall. There's a lot to talk about. Count me as somebody who doesn't regard Summit Development as a success. I'm skeptical about, I was skeptical. I won't go into specifically why. But two things I look at are where costs exceed benefits and opportunity costs. I'm also, the other night, I talked to the E S D Director about the fact I'm a growth skeptic, that is, growth comes with costs. And so we need to think about simple expansion versus development. So it's more quantitative versus qualitative, and I favor qualitative. So you, when you talked about Euclidean separation, Euclidean type of form and separation of uses, it was music to my ears, because I'd like to see more integration of commercial retail within residential. So it's called urban village centers within our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any, none have appeared since we adopted the plan. And I, there's no evidence that we've tried. Is this something that you're interested in exploring?
It is. Since I've been in zoning, and especially with comprehensive planning, you know, you create the plan, you put the colors on the map, and you say, this is what we want here. And then you sit back and hope somebody comes and does it. I don't know the answer. What is interesting to me is the idea of exploring incentives and making something, making something about that idea of putting, you know, that mixed-use two-story commercial building, that would be in the middle of a new commercial node, village node, making it more attractive, or attractive enough for somebody to come along and do it. Because I've seen, you know, like, like you're saying here, you can, you can put the colors on the map, you can color it orange and say, we want a mixed-use village node here. You can write a nice narrative to describe it, make it sound perfect and idyllic. But if nobody comes along and does it, it doesn't really matter. So the answer is that I am equally interested in exploring incentives.
Great. Happy to work with you on that. Of course, I would just caution that neighborhood buy-in is a big part of it, and sure, it's, and everything are, come along with...
I'm quickly learning that.
Yes, I'm sure you are. Okay. That's all I've got for now. Maybe I'll say more during my comment and offer a question.
Sure. Thanks. So, does your budget have funding to implement the Safe Streets for All Action Plan? Or is that not housed in your budget, or are we not directly funding it in the budget?
The plan will be done this year.
Yeah.
And it's paid for through this year, through tool design. And then, the next step will be to, you know, consider one of the corridor studies. Otherwise, it's implemented, you know, by, by planning staff.
But like a low-cost measure, for instance, like the bollards on Third Street, like a tactical sort of measure, midterm infrastructure that massively increases safety, but doesn't cost a lot, is quick to do, that the type you described would be kind of the first phase of Safe Streets for All Action Plan. If we're to adopt the plan this year and achieve your goal of implementing the plan next year, or begin implementing the plan, it seems like we'll need funds. Those are lower-cost projects, but they do still cost money. They're not like, I mean, yeah, there are materials, you know, design costs, et cetera. So just wondering about funding for those implementation steps.
We, we learned that we're able to apply for demonstration grants and implementation grants concurrently. You can fold them in, and they're not necessarily cross-competitive. So the hope is to be able to get both, the demonstration grant, to do the immediate high-impact, low-cost stuff, at the same time that we're pursuing the others, the other higher-cost, longer-term projects.
Okay. Is there, okay. Regarding the corridor studies, so the Walnut College Corridor Study has been underway for a while. The council asked to make sure that we budget engineering design funds for next year. I realize you have Engineering Department next. But similarly, we asked for conceptual design and engineering funds for the Kirkwood Corridor, and I think maybe conceptual funds for the Third, Third Natwater, too. Is that all? Which of those are included and which aren't, I guess? A few wanted to defer to Engineering, that's okay, too?
I think that the design activity would be done through the Engineering Department.
Okay. Do we have conceptual funding for either Kirkwood as a shared street, or Third Natwater Corridor in your budget?
We have 30% design for College Walnut in the budget.
Okay. Maybe a separate question, too. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to fit in some different things. We, hmm. I'll pass. It's okay. Thank you very much for your responses.
Thanks. I have also questions about funding. Is there funding for the Indiana Avenue redesign in 2025?
I believe that's through the Engineering Department.
Okay, I'll ask them. Not looking good back there. Is there funding to build out the priority bike, bike network as outlined in the transportation plan?
Yeah, I think that's through the Engineering Department. The build-out, yes.
You, we have a budget to build it? Or you're saying that's engineering?
I think it's, it's engineering.
Okay, that's strange to me. Okay. So then, I think, just following along with the council memo, I was kind of going to do this, too. Okay, sidewalk master plan, we already sort of talked about that in Public Works. There's nothing for it. Increasing funding for sidewalks, new infrastructure and maintenance, in accordance with the Safe Streets for All Plan. So there's not funding for that in this budget. You're hoping to get grants or find funding in 2026?
For...
The Safe Streets for All. Is that what you're going to be applying for grants to do, implementing the Safe Streets for All Plan?
Well, the, it's, it's a plan that provides priorities and policies and, you know, for specific projects. So I think that the grants would then be for those individually identified projects.
Do you think you could just run through a little bit of what transportation projects are getting funded in 2025?
Actual construction?
Yes.
That's, I think, we're the more, the planning end and engineering is going to be the stewards of the funding.
Engineering will be able to tell me that, it looks like.
Oh, gosh, I hope so.
Okay. Okay. That might be all for now. What fun transportation stuff are we doing?
Come again?
What fun transportation stuff are we doing in 2025, beyond simple parts of the Safe Streets for All?
Fun transportation stuff?
Yeah, fun.
Well, I mean, we, we work to realize the, the transportation plan, you know, bike pet activities.
Uh huh. Well, all right. It's really hard that planning and transportation is one department, because really, these, like, there's so many questions for planning and transportation, right? It's very hard. I'll have to comment more later, I guess, on the U D O. Thank you.
Councilmember Stasburg?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I also have questions about the Safe Streets for All. And I emailed you this a little bit in terms of, like, what is actually going to kind of result from that, which I think is what Councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenberg were also, Rosenbarger were also trying to get at. And so, like, I wrote down the new question, like, the scope of the actual builds or improvements that might occur in 2025. And I think the answer to that is those small, kind of temporary structures, just kind of to see how it works before a larger investment. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay.
Pilot projects, but not necessarily temporary.
Okay.
They could be longer-term, even, you know, a project done with, with paint and bollards could be reinforced and, and...
Right.
You know, renewed.
But we don't have, like, a list right now of the potential places where you're thinking that that might happen, because we have to wait for the actual Safe Streets for All Plan to be finished.
Yeah, the action plan is providing the larger, broader, higher guidance, as well as identifying very specific projects.
Okay. So in the budget impact, under goal number two, you have $490,000 for other services, which says it covers external consultants' fees for continued work on Safe Streets for All and other transportation initiatives. So kind of following, I guess, what Councilmembers Flaherty and Rosenbarger were trying to, to get at. I see $490,000 that you're going to use to implement the Safe Streets for All Plan. So can you talk about exactly what that $490,000 might be used for right now?
Yeah. That is reflective of the potential costs for two corridor studies. You know, again, ideally, we, in a perfect world, we would be able to do two, finish one and start one next year. That might not be likely. And those would be, you know, 250 and 240 is what we had planned for, for those two. So that's the 490.
I think that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? I believe I had a minute and 30 of the time that I yielded to you. So I'll ask one, one question. When we think about the significant challenges that we're facing, and you described as an affordable housing crisis, and how those intersect with elements of planning, you then said that, you know, we're taking an approach of saying, well, really, we might wait for another year to do some of the updates to the U D O and things like that, that you think might move the needle in this space. Given how all of these things have a long sort of tail in terms of when we see the, the outputs, why, why wait?
The, the updates to the U D O are imminent. You know, there'll be probably a significant one before the end of this year. And then we want to continue to look at, again, where the U D O is actually acting as a barrier for the development of housing. The overhaul of the U D O, which is what a adoption of a form-based code would represent, would be a sea change, and would be something that I think requires a lot of preliminary conversation, public outreach and engagement. I mean, the U D O was adopted five years ago. Typically, between major amendments, you have 10 years, 15 years. We want to respect the fact that a whole lot of people put a whole lot of time into the one that was adopted, and not disrespect that investment, so that there might be an expectation that whatever is done today can be completely overturned five years from now. So for that reason, something like an adoption of form-based codes is a, is a huge issue and should be preceded by a lot of conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. If there are no other questions by my colleagues, I would love to open it up for public comment. If you have a comment, you'll have two minutes at the mic. The, please sign your name and say it out loud for public record. And Attorney Kulak, will you also give those instructions for the people on Zoom?
Yes. And if you are on Zoom and you would like to make a comment, you can do so by raising your hand, using the reactions tab or the more tab, and we will unmute you. If you're having trouble doing that, you can also send a chat to the meeting host.
And just a reminder, if everybody can speak into the microphones, that will be much appreciated.
Thank you. My name is Sam Tobin-Hochstat. I'd like to speak with respect to thinking about transportation. And in particular, I would like to urge the city and the council to consider explicitly prioritizing the ability of children in our schools to have safe ways to get to school. As we all know, children are our most vulnerable road users. Hundreds of children every day take their bike, they walk, they drive, they take a bus to get to their schools here in Bloomington. And I would like to urge explicit support for finding safe routes to schools, building infrastructure, building policies, and coordinating with other institutions, such as the Monroe County Community School Corporation, to enable safe routes to schools. As an example of a project that I've spoken to a number of other people here about that would benefit this, MCCSC has recently decided to merge Childs and Templeton Schools. This means that people will be taking new routes to schools, and there's a need for creating additional connections between those neighborhoods. The city already has a plan to build a connection on Thornton Avenue that would, for example, significantly improve the safety of the walk from, between the Childs and Templeton districts. And I would encourage the city and the planning and transportation and engineering departments to prioritize that project and other projects that can enable our children to get to school safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions online? Comments online, sorry. I keep misspeaking.
Yes, there is one hand raised. Deborah Meyerson.
All right. Ms. Meyerson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I appreciate that the hand presentation and the planning and transportation are... are back to back. Just wanted to weigh in because, again, well, one, I love the previous comment about safe routes to school, totally up on that. But my comment is here about housing. And just to note that in addition to some of the demand-based policies, which the hand proposals are based on, whether it's down payment assistance or tenant-based rental assistance, we also need to deal with supply-based solutions for housing needs. And so, understanding that there's support for examining where the UDO can be improved to support more housing supply in the types and locations that it's needed most will be important. And in addition, it's not just the UDO, it's the efficiency of being able to manage the UDO. So more by right, meaning with ministerial approval as opposed to discretionary approval, will be a huge measure in reducing the time and costs needed to add to the local housing supply. Because if we don't have the housing supply that people need, costs will only continue to go up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments in the audience?
There's another comment online. Their name shows up as YY Anne.
All right. Seeing that there's nobody in here, we'll go back online. YY?
Hello. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So I would like to echo both of the comments just before made. Yeah, I live close to university elementary school, and it's basically an island here up the road. It's really hard to get there. There's a road without sidewalk. So basically, a lot of kids simply cannot walk or bike to the school. And by definition, every kid cannot drive. And that means they're really kind of isolated socially as well. And recent studies kind of indicating that that contribute to a lot of mental health issues for the kids. But that's, that's one. And regarding housing, I attended several board doctrine, joining-up till meetings. And I was really saddened by how difficult it is to build housing, especially kind of infill housing, which we definitely need. So I think it's really, really crucial to revise UDO so that there are more housing can be built by right without going through like months or even years of delay. Just going through these meetings, trudging through meetings, which actually open, get canceled because many members of the board cannot attend. So I really urge everyone in the city staff and council members to revise the UDO so that we can build more housing by right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no other comments in the room. Are there any other online?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so we'll return to council comments. To my right, any comments? Councilmember Rallo, then Flaherty, and then to my left, we'll go Stasberg. We'll just go in order. There you go. Yay. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to make a comment and pose it as somewhat of a question if you'd like to respond. Director, you don't have to. I'm definitely favorable to safer routes to schools, and I think that we should evaluate pathways. I think we did some time ago, and we restored some that were missing, but those connections are really important. But what I really wanted to address in comments was, we have a code vegetation standards for plantings for developments. Those codes, to my knowledge, even though they may be enforced initially, aren't followed, followed up on. And so what I've noticed, and it's observable to me and I can document, is that many developments have plants that are non-native and, in fact, are non-native invasives. And I'm wondering, me, I wonder if we need more FTE for enforcement for this problem, or if we have adequate time for the environmental planner to, to inspect these, these sites and, and do enforcement. So I'll pose that.
That's a good question. We have our two FTEs that handle enforcement and inspection right now. And so what they're able to do and what they're limited is, is basically assure that a new development or what the product of a permit completes the site with native trees, with, with meeting all the landscape standards. But there is not a mechanism in place to revisit in a year or five to make sure that the trees are all in place, unless there's a call that sends that person out there. That's a-
So it's complaint-driven, in other words?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's a wonderful point. We, we had talked about with, with this new staff person being involved in code enforcement in that regard as well, to shore that up. And it's something that, that our two superstar code enforcement officers have lobbied for. So that's, that's a point well taken, and it's on the radar.
That's good to hear. I mean, my concern is, it's a lost opportunity to have natives, but it's also a site for propagules of non-native invasives. So a good example would be, you drive on Claris, north of Covenanter, on the east side, you just see in vacant areas, Chinese fountain grass, growing, and it's spreading everywhere. And that shouldn't happen. We're spending a lot of money, for instance, on calorie pairs to take them out and replace them with, you know, appropriate native street trees. And this is really a shame if we're, if we're not keeping pace with enforcement. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. First, shout out of appreciation for the Safe Streets for All Action Plan process. I've been talking about this. You highlighted this. You came to the council with a resolution approving the goal at a high level. There is a committee on which council members sit to help develop the plan. It's going to come back to council for formal adoption and incorporation into the comprehensive plan and transportation plan. Like, that is pretty ideal, and it's what we should be looking at to model how we pursue these action plans if we want to have buy-in. Also, big supporter of form-based zoning. I would love to be part of the conversation, to shift to that direction when it's appropriate, to engage in a serious UDO overhaul. Similarly, on the nodes, the urban village centers, we called for that as an objective in the council priorities, including funding a plan to actually develop those. And I think a form-based approach would, would be helpful there. Biggest concern for sure is the lack of funding for safe streets. You shared the crash figures, 14 fatal crashes, 742 life-altering crashes in the last, or in a five-year period. We have a transportation plan priority network already in place. This next year is year six of the six-year build-out window. We are not going to meet it. We have not fully funded that plan. The Thornton project was in phase one. It should have been done two years ago. It wasn't because we haven't funded the safety plan. We are not going to achieve the now formal city policy goal of zero deaths if we don't fund the plan. So the fact that there is no funding for the plan that we are going to adopt this year, the Safe Streets for All Action Plan, is a fatal flaw in this budget, I guess, in my mind. It's a crisis, this safety crisis, and we're not treating it with the same attention of the unhoused crisis, housing affordability crises, other crises we're facing in our community. But it is that serious. It is a matter of life and death. On South Walnut Street Pike, I mentioned just yesterday, in the context of the South, the sidewalk master plan we need and funding for sidewalks, both of which were asked for by the council but not included in this budget. Someone died there. Someone also died on North Walnut a couple of years ago, and at Third and Indiana, and at Third and Washington, and at College, just south of Third. All of those deaths were preventable. All of them happened during my term. It, it's not acceptable to do nothing in the face of this. And frankly, that's what we're doing. We're not funding the plans we've passed. We're not building in funding for the plans that we have yet to pass, but, but say we want to. And so that's, again, to me, the biggest challenge with this budget, the biggest disalignment with what the council unanimously approved and cited as its priorities, and where I think we need to see a lot of movement, certainly in order to get my support for the budget. Thank you.
I guess I have to follow that. So first, I, I think I want to second, especially the end of Councilmember Flaherty's statement in terms of funding Safe Streets for All, funding some of those improvements that we know need to be made, funding the transportation plan. And I guess then I'll start with, with that transportation plan and kind of going off of what Mr. Tobin-Hochstat mentioned about safe routes to schools. Because the other safe route to school that came up yesterday and has come up recently in council meetings is a safe route to North High School, and figuring out a plan for that, whether it is a route through Cascades Park, or I, I really personally love the idea of a multi-use path along Kinzer, but that would, of course, cost a lot. And while we're talking about Kinzer, there is, in front of the planning commission right now, is about to have a second hearing for another subdivision out on Kinzer, which will change traffic patterns out there. And Kinzer Pike is kind of a nightmare as a street. And that's just another piece of our transportation network right now as a whole that I think needs a little bit of work. So going back to the transportation plan, that was 2019, that was five years ago, that that was passed, which means that it was developed even before that. And so kind of a question that I'm not going to give you time to answer, maybe you can tell me later or think about it, is when are we going to look at the transportation plan again and update? Because we have done some things on the transportation plan, and I think since then, some new things have come to light as being either more complex than originally thought, like the Cascades, you know, there was supposed to be a multi-use path on the side of Cascades Road. There's not really space for that. Like, what are we going to do instead? And that, that's a really big question. I think it needs to be addressed. And it's not currently addressed in the current transportation plan that we have. So I, I guess that's kind of a plug for my say, and I think that, that we also need to kind of reevaluate that as a whole, figure out what we haven't funded so far, and what we need to then priority fund, and what needs to be the next phase of that transportation plan. And then I'm going to end on the nice thing. I really appreciated that you highlighted the mini-grants through the Bike Ped Commission during your presentation. And that is partially a story for me that, you know, especially during budget presentations, we're looking at all the big dollar amounts. We're looking at all of the, like, big, expensive, massive projects that need the significant financial investment. And all of that stuff is really important, and we have to do it, and it's significant financial investment. But there's also those initiatives which require small financial investment but can have really, really big impacts in, in those cases on the children in that bike program, on the users of MCCSC Broadview Adult Education. And I just appreciate that you told us a couple of stories about those small things that the city also does, because we do these big things, and we also do small things too. Thank you very much.
Yes, I have a quick question. Isn't part of the reason for doing a Safe Streets for, Safe Streets for All Action Plan in order to get funding? I mean, wasn't that the whole idea that we want to, that's how we're going to get funding?
Yeah, by completing the action plan, it makes you eligible to apply for implementation funding.
Thank you. Just a short word about native plantings. This is important, and getting rid of invasives is important. But it all kind of adds to the cost of development. I, I was talking to folks from Habitat for Humanity who are busy working on Osage Place Neighborhood in my district, and they had to dig out and get rid of invasives in order to put in planters and the whole thing. There was also some back and forth with CBU about drainage issues. And, and the whole thing made, delayed their project and made it much more expensive. So we need to balance, yes, we want natives, but is it really on a nonprofit-like Habitat to, you know, dig up a bunch of invasives that they did not plant and that they are trying to, you know, keep in check? It's, you know, there are trade-offs there. And I think we are in an urgent situation with housing where we should make it easier for Habitat and organizations like that, rather than making it more difficult. So just keep that in mind. And then just, some of my questions earlier were about things in the memo that I just didn't understand. So I just encourage all department heads to write the memo for laypeople who don't, you know, get these concepts or are familiar with them every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to third what Councilmember Stasberg and Flaherty said about transportation funding. I would just say it more generally. I think for 2025, the budget for this is pretty much gutted. And that is very much a no-go for me, transportation, pun intended there. I am going to switch for a second. And I mean, we, the council memo, we asked for 150,000 additional dollars for a sidewalk committee, and the administration said no to that. That's such a tiny amount of money. And I mean, it's, we can't even do that much with it. But even that got a no. So I, I mean, it's, I think it's a dire problem here. Talking about the UDO just for a second, because I haven't yet, Councilmember Rallo referenced our citywide goals in the comprehensive plan that we reiterated in our council memo about neighborhood hubs. It's something that hasn't been touched, I think, since the comprehensive plan got created. We don't have zoning that allows for that right now. I also think it's very difficult because for hubs to survive in our neighborhoods, we would need much more density in our neighborhoods, which also just pointing to how I'm excited that we're going to be making changes to the UDO for missing middle housing and affordable housing in our walkable neighborhoods where we would also have hubs. We talk a lot about needing workforce housing. Those right now are illegal to build in our walkable neighborhoods. So looking forward to those changes. A lot of talk about safe routes to school right now. I'm a big fan of those too. I think a lot of people can get more involved, including like more parents and the school system when we talk about how kiddos can safely get to school. We, as some of you know, have a sibling city, Palo Alto. They have a Safe Routes to School program and a coordinator. They fund those things. We do not. They have seen a 36% increase in secondary school students biking to school over the last two decades, and now they are at 60% of their students biking to school. So that is an example of a city that we sometimes partner with for ideas, that is making really good progress in implementing their plans and putting funding toward their plans for safe, safe transportation. I just think in general, I'm discouraged by this budget, and I don't, I think we have 10 days to try to make something work. But this, to me, is just a little sad.
Any other comments? Okay. I might just wrap up by saying, I think despite the concerns that we've all presented, and this is the reason why we do these hearings, so that we can, you know, share our opinions. I think that, I think, I want to say both publicly and to you directly, thank you so much for your leadership. We're so grateful that you're here in the city and grateful for, I think, the, the willingness to be bold and, and, and speak to us very clearly about long-term plans here. And really looking forward to continuing to work with you, not just in the next 10 days, but, you know, hopefully for years to come. But, so thank you very much, Director Hiddle. If it is okay with everybody else here and no complaints on, or no objections on council, I'd like to just call for a 10-minute recess before our, the world's best city engineer presents. Is that okay? No objections? Somebody said five instead of 10?
Forty-five?
Okay, let's do five. So we'll come back 45 past seven. Be, so do what you need to do in those times. Ah, it's set. No, you can't say, we haven't, I haven't said a turn.
Forty-three past, that clock is wrong.
Okay, when that says zero. Welcome back. For those of you just joining us, this is day three of our wonderful budget hearings. And then we're about to hear from our most excellent engineering department. And so, Director Seabor, we pass on to you. You have 15 minutes.
All right. Good evening, council members. I'm Andrew Seabor, the city engineer, the most excellent city engineer, and, and the director of the engineering department. I look forward to providing you with an overview of the engineering department and our 2025 budget proposal. I could spend more than my allotted time speaking tonight, but I will keep this short, for all of our sakes. That being said, please know I'm happy to answer any questions you have or expand on things that I may be glossing over in my presentation or in follow-up dialogue afterwards. To quickly introduce the engineering department, we oversee use of the public right-of-way through permitting work done by other entities, managing capital infrastructure projects, and making data-driven decisions regarding transportation operations. We complete these tasks with the goals of improving the safety, mobility, and accessibility of the city's multimodal transportation of the city's multimodal transportation system. The department comprises 15 positions, and the people in these roles do this important work in a fashion that fosters a positive environment, upholds the highest ethical standards, strives for continual improvement, and works collaboratively with others. I'd like to quickly highlight some recent and ongoing engineering department successes. This year, we implemented a new organizational structure that provides more staff support and creates resilience to aid when staff may be on leave or while there are vacant positions. We're also a highly trained team committed to staying on top of industry trends. As an example, this year, we completed an ADA training class facilitated by the U.S. Access Board's Transportation Accessibility Specialist. We were fortunate to have her in Bloomington between the major U.S. cities she was bouncing between. As a part of that training, we had an experiential exercise with members of the Council for Community Accessibility. This was a great experience that combined our desires to learn and meaningfully engage with the community. I feel engineering is also leading the way with utilizing the city's new permitting system to track different types of investigations, on top of enhancing our workflow with permitting. In addition to the many internal and administrative benefits we are realizing, this platform also enhances transparency through the civic access portal. We continue to work with ITS and others to build on these early successes and explore new avenues beyond the original scope of integration. And like every year, we have a series of exciting capital projects underway. But I'm really happy to share that Hopewell East is making great progress with substantial completion expected before the end of the year. In addition to our successes, we have a number of challenges and needs that we continue to face, with the primary ones tied to staffing and limited resources, which I'll discuss more later in my presentation. Looking to the future, I see a number of opportunities. For example, there are a lot of exciting developments in transportation planning that ultimately make their way to the engineering department. Things like the Safety Action Plan and major corridor studies, including Bloomington Transit, screen-lined. I also think the Citywide Fiber Project is crucial to highlight. While I see it as an awesome opportunity for the community, I'd be remiss to state that it's also had a number of successes and continued challenges. Looking ahead to 2025, the engineering department has three foundational goals we intend to focus on. Each of these goals are consistent with findings and intentions highlighted in Mayor Thompson's transition report, the administration's one-year goals established through a series of cabinet-level discussions, and topics and priorities identified by council. First, we need to build a strong team that effectively works together to achieve the city's goals. Successful management of the right-of-way is not possible without the work of staff, and recent structural changes and turnover within the department make, provide an opportunity to enhance how we do this work. Second, we need the team to enhance relationships with stakeholders, and partners to improve understanding and find ways we can work together so that everyone can succeed. And third, we need to effectively use our key resources of time and money to make progress on the city's goals for a safe, accessible, and efficient multimodal transportation system. This slide summarizes the engineering department budget and compares the 2025 proposal with past year department budgets. The engineering department's overall 2025 budget proposal is approximately $2.9 million, which is a 6% decrease compared to 2024. In this summary, you see the capital outlay portion of the department's annual budget has a pattern of fluctuation over the years. This is partly attributed to the fact we utilize other funding sources to carry forward capital projects that are not a part of the annual budget. These funding sources include things like general obligation bonds, federal funding, state grants, and tax increment financing. When reviewing this summary, it's also important to understand that some capital projects and service contracts can take years to complete, and we are actively spending funds encumbered in prior years, so its budget in one year may show up as an expenditure in a following year. Some specific budget notes to highlight include 17% increase to personnel, which includes the conversion of a long-term temporary position to a permanent position, upstates to position salaries in the citywide cost of living adjustment, a 44% decrease in supplies due to prior-year equipment purchases, like that being used to test compaction in the picture on the screen, a 61% increase in other services, which is primarily attributed to a couple engineering service contracts and motor vehicle repairs, and finally, a 28% decrease in capital outlays due to the loss of some prior funding sources. So going back to one of the department's challenges, over the last couple of years, we have really struggled with staff retention and recruitment. As such, our number-one goal is to build a strong staff team. Beyond the obvious of filling positions with strong candidates and doing all we can to retain the amazing staff we currently have, this goal also includes a focused effort of evaluating and improving standards, processes, and policies to improve consistency and efficiency. The budget impact of building a strong staff team is estimated at approximately $330,000, though I will note that I anticipate the personnel budget impact will increase pending the ongoing salary study. I want to use this opportunity to highlight that staff positions are only approved if they are found to be truly needed. So anytime a position sits vacant, that has real impacts on our ability to effectively do what we need to do. It puts the remaining staff in unfavorable positions, limits our ability to effectively use program funds, and make progress on city initiatives, and it can necessitate additional reliance on expensive consultant contracts for support. 2025 will be focused on filling vacant positions, retaining current team members, and enhancing process and tools within the current structure. As a part of achieving this goal, I look forward to working with Human Resources and the CROW team on their implementation of the ongoing salary study, and bodies like the Board of Public Works and City Council as appropriate on updates to various standards and policies. Now, goal number two. Everyone is impacted by the work of the engineering department, and everything that the department does relies on others in order to achieve a successful outcome. As such, this goal is focused on enhancing relationships with stakeholders. While being understaffed in recent years, the department has worked to maintain existing and create new relationships, but there are opportunities to improve transparency and better coordinate with others. The estimated fiscal impact of this goal is relatively small, $17,000, which is primarily related to various services that enable the department to communicate with others. However, the benefits of this goal can be significant, translating into things like reduced construction-related impacts, a more positive environment, and increased public satisfaction, and the chance to maximize the city's ability to successfully work with partners like the Indiana Department of Transportation and developers to maintain, build, and improve the city's infrastructure. The goal of enhancing relationships builds on our first goal, in that we aim to improve processes, but with clear information sharing and in collaboration with stakeholders. There are numerous stakeholders that we aim to improve relationship with, and while I recognize this is an ongoing goal, we aim to be especially intentional with it next year, as our capacity hopefully fills out. Finally, goal number three. Back to one of the biggest challenges of having limited time and funding, but big plans and numerous opportunities. We need to effectively use the resources we do have to improve the city's multimodal transportation system. The pictures on the side highlight both what we can do and what we need to do. One example is a project in which we secured multiple funding sources, including community development block grant funds to construct a sidewalk, and the other is in the vicinity of a recent fatal pedestrian crash that was mentioned by another council member here, in which there is an incomplete sidewalk network. In my mind, the budget impact associated with this goal is generally broken into two categories. First, the cost of gathering good data, and then the tools and resources that help us use that data in an efficient way to make informed decisions. And then second, the capital funding available to move projects forward with, and that enables the city to leverage additional resources, like the over $940,000 in federal safety funding we've been awarded to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility. I want to note that the public benefit associated with a good transportation system is not something we will see directly in the city budget. Additionally, numerous improvements are made to the city's infrastructure by stakeholders and community members investing in the community, but these benefits can only be fully realized with the support of city resources. Successful outcomes of this goal will result in things like the completion of major projects, including the West Second Street Modernization and Safety Improvements Project and Phase One of Hopewell West. There are numerous other examples of how we aim to work with others to maximize opportunities with the resources available. One example is outside the front door of this building. The culvert under City Hall Morton Street driveway was recently replaced by City Utilities, but through coordination with them and with the Public Works Street Division, we now also have improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure in that area. Now, starting to wrap things up. Engineering's proposed 2025 department budget of approximately $2.9 million includes funding from the General, Alternative Transportation, and Cumulative Capital Development Funds. These funds will support the department's goals to build a strong staff team, to enhance relationships with stakeholders, and to effectively use the resources we have to improve the city's multimodal transportation system. Thank you for your time and consideration of this budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Director Seabor. Those questions from last time, then that's why I'm going first. Is there funding for the Indiana Avenue redesign in 2025?
Not in this budget.
Thank you for that quick answer. Is there funding to build out the priority bike network, as outlined in the transportation plan?
It's not in this budget. I will note that we had a recent conversation with a couple council members about sidewalks specifically, I know that's not directly answering a question, in which there is definitely an interest in exploring and recognizing a need to want to support these kinds of projects, and wanting to look at other funding sources, like potentially GO bonds or other things.
Okay, and then from, thank you, from our council memo, is there funding for the engineering designs for the College Avenue Walnut corridor improvements?
The corridor study that's underway will take that project to 30% design, and we do not have anything budgeted for taking it further. I think once we know what that design is, and what the funding strategy is, and what grants we'll be securing, we'll be able to make a more informed decision on that.
Okay, but no money for, in the 2025 budget, beyond that 30%?
Correct.
Right, okay. And then the conceptual and engineering design for Kirkwood Avenue Shared Street Conversion, any money in this budget?
No.
No. And the conceptual design for East Third Atwater Corridor Study, any money in this budget?
No. I do on that project, too. Just want to note that there's, of course, opportunities and a desire for multiple departments, including Transit, to coordinate on the Green Line project, which is going to have significant infrastructure impacts as well.
Okay, thank you. This one is not a yes or no, and it is harder. It just came to me because, you know, I know we've worked together so much about limited funding and everything like that, limited resources. Do you have ideas of how we can maybe do better at balancing where, just thinking about the Elm Heights stop sign versus a North Madison Street residence who don't have any solutions to speeding and crashes yet? I mean, what, is there anything, you know, kind of underway for engineering to balance those needs, where there are actual crashes and danger versus, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess to build on, one of the things I said I'm most excited about is the things going on in transportation planning. And with that Safety Action Plan that's in development and subsequent updates to the transportation plan, those are just huge. They'll help us reimagine how we're prioritizing projects. Right now, the transportation plan lays out some strategies that are great, but we're also kind of starting to maybe shift in trying to prioritize other things a little bit more. And so how do we, how do we balance those things out?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Seabor. So what is, what would be the cost of that connection between the Stubbs of Thornton?
I don't have that off the top of my head. And I guess to that connection to the transportation plan, sometimes we'll say, like, on some of the priority projects, it doesn't specify what component of the plan should be built. So like, the transportation plan suggests that be a road with sidewalks and just with everything, but maybe there is an incremental improvement. And so it's, what exactly does that cost even represent is a good question.
I mean, I mean, could we do it on the cheap without precluding, putting a road in later? I mean, just put a gravel path or something that allows, you know, kids to walk it?
Yeah, that would be, just like we recently did at the extension of Hawthorne to Weatherstone, is billing paths to make those kinds of connections.
Yeah. So is that something you could look into and maybe report back to us if we want to request funding for that?
Yes, I know that that's on the radar, and I know that's where we work very closely with planning to help prioritize the projects.
Okay. I had a question about, regarding the Hawthorne-Weatherstone Green Line, whatever one thinks of it. At the ends of it are crosswalks, you know, one on Hillside, the other one on Atwater. I was hoping for signalized, I mean, real signalized intersections there, not just flashing, telling you the speed.
Yeah.
You're the engineer. My preference would have been a hawk signal for the kids crossing to Templeton there at Olive and Weatherstone. And I wondered why there wasn't a signal mirroring the Third Street and Hawthorne, where there is a signal there. Could you, could you explain why your team decided for the flashing warning sign instead?
Sure. So there's two different things. Down at the Hillside location, it's a, you know, it's a two-lane, two-way road. We have, both there and Atwater have, we're doing a trial with the speed feedback signs, and we are going to be measuring the effectiveness of those over time. I think down at Hillside, there's the flashing rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which I think based on the criteria we have is, was determined to be a good solution there, and we'll continue to monitor it. That could always be changed in the future. Up at Atwater, I think it's more, how much do we invest in that until there is that Atwater Third Street Corridor Study? So that's more, needing to take a more holistic approach of what we're doing there, and then what intersections, what kind of treatments we're going to do.
Okay. Well, I've stated my preference, and we can talk more about that.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I want to follow up a little bit. I think about what Councilmember Roseberger was moving toward. It's a little disturbing to not fund things that we had previously determined to be priorities. Were there conversations within engineering, within planning, transportation, and engineering to deliberately kind of be like, okay, we have higher priorities that we need to fund right now?
Sure. Yeah, I guess maybe two steps, and I'm happy to follow up on any of these things, too, but big picture, I think, is the city and the administration, as even as an engineering department, my number-one priority is trying to take care of our staff, because none of this stuff happens without them. So just fully supporting that and recognizing that's consuming a lot of this year's budget. And then the second piece is within prioritizing, like, we do have capital funding in Engineering's 2025 budget. The projects that were prioritized for that are ones that, we need this local funding to leverage the almost million dollars of federal funding. So it was, we, if we don't spend it there, we just lose that money. And so that's pedestrian safety and accessibility improvements.
Can you tell me specifically what projects those are?
Yeah, there's a series of essentially downtown curb ramp improvements, and then a crosswalk improvement project at various locations through the city. So there's a set of three projects that have federal funding, federal safety funding.
Okay. Are there plans for those somewhere that we could see?
Yeah, they should be on our department website, and if they're not, if you want to follow up, I'm happy to share.
Yeah, if you could maybe share those with us, just so that then we could see specifically what is actually being funded right now. I think that's all I'll say until comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Seabor. A couple of smaller, just follow-up questions related, or things we've talked about before. We've discussed how the Third Street sort of medium-term infrastructure that's in place is not, used existing materials, it wasn't complete for the corridor, and I think y'all were working on building that out. Is that happening this year?
Yeah, I expect that to happen. We'll be bidding it out this year. It might not be built till winter time, but that is in the works.
Is it in this year's budget, like 2024?
It is in the 2024 budget.
Okay. And then some of the, my colleague asked about the Indiana Safety, Indiana Avenue Safety Improvement Project that's not funded in 2025. Is its funding in 2024?
It's being explored conceptually in 2024. There may be some funding to secure design once the concept's more fully vetted, but not funding for construction.
Okay. So you mentioned the need to leverage other funding, of course. That's always been the case with large capital projects, and that's the strategy we've taken all along, including the MPO, federal funding, others, some of which require matches. I think you also said something like, that can only be fully realized with the support of city resources, of course. How do we think about those things? Do we have a multi-year capital plan, like a five-year priority projects and capital plan, like where we think it's all going to come from, what we need to contribute, that kind of thing?
I'm struggling, that's a really big question. So there is, we have a capital plan, we have, we have the transportation plan that helps prioritize projects, and then we also have various funding opportunities that come- prioritize projects, and then we also have various funding opportunities that come and needing to balance the projects that will score and fit those criteria with what's already identified as a priority.
Got it. Do we have a plan to bond for, like, the projects that, like, so again, we're in the final, next year is the final year of the six-year priority network build-out. We're a little behind schedule. We've done a creditable job, I think. We're not quite in line with our ambition, but I haven't heard much about what we're doing next year to come as close as we can to meeting our goals. Are those projects funded next year? What's?
No, they're, they're not. And I think, I know I saw one question that I have not yet responded to, just what is that missing gap? So I think by like a mileage perspective, what's been built and what's funded is, I'll say, making up 63-ish, 60% of it has been built or funded, so we've got 30-some percent left. Much of what's left is the hard stuff that's expensive. And just throwing out numbers, that's maybe a $20 million investment to build everything. But then it gets to, you know, it gets to prioritization. So those are generally bicycle-focused. The transportation plan shows those as priority projects, is assumed done within six months or six years.
Can I actually ask a small follow-up moment right away? I'm sorry to cut you off. What about engineering designs for those projects instead? If we don't have the capital to build them all, what about doing the engineering designs now?
Since you're answering a question that also I asked, I'm happy to yield my time. So go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I am a little sleep deprived. Could, could you?
If we don't have the capital of that $20 million outlet, what about producing the engineering plans now, which would be a smaller lift, but leave us ready to implement? Is that something that's been considered?
Yeah, there is certainly a balance, and we want to have some shovel-ready projects, but how much money and time and resources do we invest in designing? And then in the part of the design, we're engaging with the public, and we're going to do something without knowing what the funding plan is. So it's, we don't have much of that, but there are a couple of things usually in the works.
Like Indiana Avenue, turns out. Thanks.
Which isn't a priority project in the transportation plan, too.
To my left, any questions? Councilmember P. Mansbeth?
Yes, in your memo, you had under, let's see, under Goal Three in the outputs and outcomes, you had the statement that private investments in public infrastructure would reflect city priorities and are constructed to last.
Yeah.
What private investments are there in public infrastructure?
Tons, tons and tons and tons. Utilities, think of Summit PUD. How many new roads it's going to get built through there? That's just an example.
So you're, you're talking about roads that are built by developers?
I'm talking about roads built by developers. I'm talking about developments, redeveloping properties, and building protected bike lanes and clear areas, building multi-use paths on other facilities, rebuilding 14th Street, major capital investments into our public infrastructure.
I'm sorry, you're speaking very quickly.
Sorry.
So all those things that you just rattled off, those are being paid for with private funds?
By developers, yeah, or, yeah, generally.
Okay, thank you. I think I had one other one. Oh, yeah, and this is something that was already asked about. Can you actually name the three projects that we have matching funds for?
I, give me two seconds. So one is, we have a series of like downtown curb ramp projects. So essentially, we are funding the construction engineering for Phase Four of our downtown curb ramp project, and the design of the fifth phase of a downtown curb ramp project. And then we are also funding the construction of our second phase of the crosswalk safety improvement project. One thing I also want to note that maybe relates to council sidewalk stuff is, I think that committee has tended to put some of the money to traffic calming. And so within the Engineering 2025 budget, we do have a specific line for traffic calming to essentially take that burden off the committee. And so essentially, the dollar number there doesn't change, but there's maybe $50,000 more for that.
Thank you.
Any other council member questions? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If you have a public comment and would like to make it, if you could just come up to the podium and write your name and do all of those wonderful things and state your name, and you'll have two minutes. If Attorney Kula could say the same for the people on Zoom.
Yes, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, you can do so using the raise hand feature in the reactions tab or in the more tab. And if you need assistance, you can send a chat to the meeting host.
Are there any takers? Go on once. All right. All right, seeing no public comment, we will come back to council member comments, and I'll start to my right. Any comments? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seabor. I appreciate all the work your department does, generally excellent work, and yeah, you're all dedicated public servants. I think from, at a high-level process perspective, I'm still concerned about, especially in the transportation category, but maybe more broadly, it seems like maybe gut check, like half of what the unanimous council buy-in on priorities was, were not included, and really without conversation about, about them. So like conceptual and design funding for Kirkwood Avenue Shared Street, for instance, which I know a majority of council members are excited and supportive of, would love to see us move forward on that. It's in the transportation plan, it's called for, has been for some time. And so that's concerning. I know not everybody gets everything they want, but this proposal is what the mayor wants. Like, yes, it's subject to constraints and trade-offs, but it is actually her optimal budget. Like, it is exactly what she chose to present, weighing, you know, input from us. But in contrast, exactly what we chose to prioritize is maybe half included, you know? And so I don't think that's a good orientation of where we should be. Again, I spoke on the first night that I think we got here because we didn't have collaborative conversations before getting here. And so that's, that needs fixing. I think the Safe Streets for All Resolution and the conversations we had with Tool Design when they were here, I shared frustrations about the seven years it took to get to the Third Street, medium-term, low-cost, quick build, infrastructure installed. And it was basically a question of, how do we actually do this stuff? And it was funding and political will. And I just think we don't have those things right now. And so we, I don't know, I'd like to keep working on it. I cited in the last comments, you know, the 14 deaths and 742 life-altering crashes from 2018 to 2022. This is a public health crisis, it is a safety crisis, it is every bit as serious as any other crisis that folks are referencing in the context of these budget hearings. It is a solvable crisis for which we are responsible as the people who build the infrastructure for our transportation system, but we're not treating it with the seriousness necessary to solve it. And so I just think we have to do much, much, much better. I know we're going to need to bond for things, I know we're going to need to leverage all the other funding sources we can, but we actually have to contribute more than we are to date as well. And that's demonstrated by actually the fact that we're well behind the priority network build-out. We've been leveraging all those things, we've been doing that, and we haven't met our goals. And if we are going to meet our goals of zero deaths and serious injuries by 2039, we're going to have to change from the way we've been doing things and do something different. Thank you.
To my left, any comments? Councilmember Stasberg?
Thank you. I'm generally just disappointed at the lack of actual investment in actual new projects for next year throughout planning and transportation. I think it's great to have plans, yep, we want to, you know, invest in some of those larger studies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it feels like we've just decided that the other plans that we made just aren't important anymore, and we just need to keep on making new plans. And without real conversation between all stakeholders, I feel like those decisions were made. And that, I think, is a less-than-ideal way to do things, and I think that it, in some ways, disrespects the work that was done five years ago by the, by the people who built that first transportation plan and went, hey, we're going to prioritize these things. And I'm all for saying, like, let's examine our priorities, let's like make sure that they're still applicable. And I'm all for those conversations, but those conversations actually have to happen instead of just being made through a lack of budgeting and a lack of fiscal commitment to doing these things. So I hope that something about that can change. Thank you.
Do you have some comments?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with my colleagues. I, you know, I was on the, on the council when we passed the 2019 transportation plan. I authored several amendments to it. I think a lot of work went in, a lot of public input. I think it was a good plan, and that should be our blueprint for moving forward. And just to hear, you know, Councilmember Rosenbarger ask about point after point after point that's in that plan and whether it's getting funded and hearing no, is very disappointing. I don't blame Mr. Seabor or Mr. Hiddle or any department head, but I think it's kind of higher up, as, as Mr. Flaherty said, that, you know, the, the new mayor seems to be making her own priorities, and that's, you know, that's understandable, but we have priorities that there have been lots of input and buy-in on, and they were good priorities, and we are losing track of them. The other thing I'll say is that we definitely do need bond funding, and the sooner we can start talking about that, the better, so that we don't get a plan that doesn't have buy-in, both by council and the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo, then, Zulik.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Seabor, thank you for your presentation. I'm in general agreement. I, I agree with my colleagues, I have a caveat about that, but I want to first say that I appreciate your willingness to engage constituents. You've done so always straightforwardly, you've been patient in answering people's questions, and, you know, you've really, you make a real effort to bring everybody in and address their concerns, so I really appreciate that. Case in point, the Maxwell Sheridan Stop Sign, that by all indications, I judge is working well. We didn't address it this evening, but I don't know of any adverse outcomes there. We found it's inexpensive compared to the redesign of the entire intersection, so that was, it was a cheap way of safe pedestrian crossing there. Juxtapose that with the Hawthorne-Weatherstone Greenway, which I regard, and this has to do with planning and transportation as well. But as a project, that was a solution looking for a problem. There was no traffic, no speeding, and yet we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on it. That would have been money that could have been deployed elsewhere to be directed to real priorities of safe pedestrian crossing. And so I hope that that doesn't continue occurring. I mean, there's an opportunity cost there, and I think it's another good reason why a council should be the final judge of Greenways projects. I mean, we ought to be of a certain amount. I mean, we could, we could discuss what the amount could be, but certainly something on, on the level of Hawthorne-Weatherstone, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think that I have some trepidation about the type of signalization that occurred as where, and so I'd like to follow up with you because I regard safe, real crosswalks as places where you can, where traffic is stopped. And I think that on arterials like that, where you're bound to get a lot of pedestrian activity, especially children, they should have that opportunity. So I'm skeptical about that signalization, but I'd like to learn more about it. I'm not a traffic engineer, so you, you people study it and you use hard data and so forth, so I'd like to know more about it. So, but overall, I appreciate your, your good work, and so far, I'll support this budget. But I would like a follow-up on the Thornton connection as well. Thanks.
And thank you, Mr. Seabor, for your presentation. I agree with a lot of what's been said, and I just want to say also, we can talk about what our priorities are, but at the end of the day, our priorities are what we fund, and it's really difficult to feel like this budget is a compromise between the mayor's administration and council. That is all. Thank you.
I'll just say also echoing, thank you, first and foremost. As I said from the beginning, we are so grateful to have you leading our engineering department, and thankful to all of the members of your team that worked tirelessly on so many things that make our city better. I think sort of before, maybe agreeing with some of the things that my fellow council members said, I would like to slightly reframe, I think, some of the conversations, and I think it's necessary, so it's sort of more of a comment to my colleagues, that I think that first and foremost this year, in comparison to other years, that we have had more engagement than, than it started in the past. I think it's important for us to note that we were the ones who literally said at an open meeting that we did not want to have further meetings with the mayor because of other reasons. And so I think that we need to frame the conversation that we're having right now in the, I mean, in the context of, of the fact that we still have 10 days to make improvements. And when I read this portion of the budget, the way that it sounds to me, and there's really, I think, two budgets, two parts of the budget that sounded the same way, is that we're essentially saying, look, like, we need more money, right? We need more money in this space, however, we're not putting more money here. And so I think that what we need to be spending, you know, the next 10 days doing is seeing, like, can we find other ways to fund these priorities? And I think that this, again, you know, it's my soapbox, and I will continue being on this soapbox until, you know, the end of next year or something, is, is that this is the exact reason why we need to change the way that we budget, because you start with your priorities, not, you know, and, and it's forcing us, I think, to have a really strong conversation about, you know, if, and if this is the way we feel that X thing is more important than this thing, then we should be having that conversation openly. And I think that we're, we're sort of skirting around in this budget proposal doing that. And so, and the last, the last thing that I'll say on this is that even when, within the budget, and this is sort of echoing something that Councilmember Rosenbarger said earlier, you know, when we say, well, one of our goals is to be efficient, okay, well, like, how's that reflected in the budget? Like, I mean, there's lots of things we might be able to do to either find more opportunity, more money, whatever. And I also think, a comment that I've made many times throughout this, is that I think particularly with engineering, there's money that we spend now is savings that we have later, and money that we don't spend now is more expense in the future. And so, you know, I think that that needs to be part of the ways that we're thinking particularly about allocation of funds to engineering, and that is my time. So I think everybody has had a chance. You have not, you have not, okay, sorry, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Rosenbarger, I would not have gone. Go ahead. Have the closing words.
Until then. Okay, I want to say thank you, and I appreciate you, Director Seabor, and your staff, and I totally understand how hard it is when you're not fully staffed and the toll it takes on other people. I have said for years, too, we put such a focus on police retention, but it is such a problem. And I know we're working on it with our compensation study. I know that so many departments struggle with people coming in and out in one or two years, and it's just, it's just so difficult. And I mean, then residents, of course, struggle too without those services, everything like that. I just want to reiterate, we're already behind on the transportation plan. We've been going slower than we were supposed to from its inception. This 2025 budget does not keep pace with the slowness that we have been experiencing. It brings it almost, I mean, it's closer to a halt than where we are right now, I would say. That is discouraging is one word, but I think not okay is a different, is a different phrase. I would say this is also not the first year councils tried to get a budget that prioritizes transportation projects. Of course, last term, there were a lot of us, all different spectrums, Democrats like we have this year, too, but things that we came together on last term were sidewalks, right, and safety of our people who walk and bike for transportation, and that was kind of neat, of course, since we disagreed about a lot, but it was just very big back then. And under Hamilton, we did bond, right, for sidewalk infrastructure for a period of time, like, we got that done. And what we have to do is just say, like, it's true that words aren't enough, we have to prioritize, it is political will, and it is funding, and we are the body that votes on the budget. And I think this council sent a memo with not, you know, all nine of us supporting it with these priorities, and we asked, we got a budget and really didn't get to collaborate beyond our memo, and I think, like, what are the options after we ask and it's not happening? And I think that's what we have to look at next. I mean, we do have these 10 days to try to figure some of this out. It gives me great apprehension to... 10 days to try to figure some of this out. It gives me great apprehension to approve something with funding that is so important and urgent. Just maybe we'll bond for it, maybe we'll get grants for it. I don't know that, I don't think that's enough for our residents, and I think, I think something has to be figured out, I guess, in the, in the next 10 days. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot I was cheering. Okay, so, we will now move on. Thank you, Director Seabor. We will now move on to Bloomington Transit, keeping with the theme of transportation. We welcome you to the podium. And they will have 15 minutes. Fifteen minutes, go ahead. Please remind, remind us to introduce yourself and speak into the, the microphone. Thank you so much.
Good evening. John Connell, General Manager of the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Along with me tonight is Krista Browning, the public, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation Controller. The Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation is a municipal corporation with independent taxing authority. The BPTC has a five-member Board of Directors, which have the authority oversee the corporation. Two members of the Board are appointed by the mayor, and three are appointed by the council. I guess I should have done this, huh? The BPTC Board has reviewed and has recommended this 2025 budget be presented to this council for approval. In 2022, the city and, and Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation entered into a five-year interlocal agreement to work together to enhance public transportation in our community by utilizing city ED-LIT funds to fund new transit initiatives. To date, ED-LIT funds have been used as local matching funds for federal grants, 16 battery electric buses, four microtransit mini-buses, and four microtransit minivans. We used ED-LIT funding for the complete computer automated dispatching and scheduling software for the microtransit program, and we've used LIT funding to fund Phase One and Phase Two of the Green Line Bus Rapid Transit Studies. We continue to use LIT funding to subsidize Sunday services, both on fixed route and access, and we've also used it to subsidize two key positions within the corporation, that of Grant and Procurement Manager and Manager of Marketing and Development. So this year, I think I went too far. As far as this year, a quick update on current ED-LIT, oh, I did that, didn't I? All right, hold on, I'm sorry. Okay, 2025 ED-LIT funding. For 2025, our plans for the funding include 2.5 million to set aside for local matching funds for a federal 5307 grant, which we expect the total project cost to exceed $12 million. We plan to use 1.1 million as local matching funds for, for buses, minivans, and support vehicles. We want to use 500,000 for the expansion of our Blink microtransit program for operating assistance. We want to continue to operate the Sunday service with both fixed route and paratransit services. We intend to enter Year Two of a three-year plan to improve passenger, passenger bus stops, shelters, and signage. We had $240,000 budgeted this year, and we continue, we want to continue our mission to improve those bus shelters and stops, improve accessibility. We have 292,000 set aside for that, and we want to continue to subsidize the two key staff positions that I've mentioned, and we have 75,000 set aside for fare subsidy program. Currently, we have roughly 40 agencies that are eligible for discounted fares. 2025 goals. We want to acquire the land and secure federal funding for new administrative operations and maintenance complex. We want to work closely with the Public Transportation Council of Indiana to advocate and lobby for increased in state PMTF funding, and we want to expand the Blink microtransit program to provide coverage throughout the city. So breakdown of the 2025 budget. Class One Personnel. The 2025 budgeted amount is $8.7 million, which is approximately 10 and 1/2% higher than 2024. Materials and Supplies is 1.7 million, which is right in line with last year's amount. Class Three Professional Services, 2.8 million. This is a reduction of 17 and 1/2% from 2024. And then our capital, Class Four category, we have a significant increase, almost 43%, 42.75% at $19 million. What's driving those expenses is the personnel. We have an increase of the 10 and 1/2%. Our general wage increase is programmed at 6% consistent with our collective bargaining agreement. It also includes $167,000 for contingency services. This is money we budget in the event during the course of a year, and an opportunity presents itself for us to do some type of new service. We're in a position to do so. Unfortunately, we're anticipating a significant increase in our health insurance. We were locked in for two years. 2025, we're going to have to shop the market, and unfortunately, our expectation is we're going to be seeing some significant increases. As I mentioned, materials and supplies is right in line with last year. The good news is prices have stabilized. We're seeing some consistencies in the prices for parts and services, or parts and supplies. Our professional service line item, Class Three, is down 17.64%, and that is driven from the, last year, we had 600,000 budgeted for A and E services in the event we were to get the award for the new facility. Unfortunately, we weren't successful. And then capital, 40, almost 43% increase. We do have included in this budget transit buses, vans, and support vehicles. I apologize, the revenue slide was omitted, but I'll go walk through the revenues that are going to fund this budget. BPTC taxes, $2.4 million represents 7.3% of, of the revenues to support this budget. Our fares, which include cash fares, partnership agreements, our contract with Indiana University, $2.3 million representing 7.1% of the, the revenue. The city's ED-LIT contribution is 11 and 1/2% at $3.8 million. Our state funding, although it has been stagnant, it does represent 8% of our revenue source at 2.6 million. Federal funding represents over, more than half of, of the revenue for this budget, 53.69% or $17 million, 17 and 1/2. We will be using cash reserves, 3.1 million in cash reserves, leaving a budget, a balance of 13 million in cash reserves. So as I mentioned, our primary goal is to acquire land and secure federal funding for a new administration, operations, and maintenance complex. Two years ago, the BPTC Board adopted a strategic plan, Transform BT, which outlined a bold vision for the future of public transportation in our community. In order to achieve the goals of the service improvements and expansion, a new facility is necessary. We are simply out of space, and we need to acquire additional vehicles and additional employees to meet the goals outlined in our strategic plan. The impact for the new facility, $2.4 million, like I mentioned, will be set aside for local matching funds for the next round of federal funding opportunities. We do have other local funding in place for, for matching funds for the design and construction of a facility. We're currently updating the Facility Needs Assessment Study, and our property acquisition consultant is finalizing the site suitability analysis for evaluation purposes of the sites we've, we've identified as potential locations. We continue our ongoing discussions with Federal Transit Administration, just hopefully to see this project come to be. The vision for the new facility, we expect to have a transition to the next generation zero-emission transit fleet and provide space and equipment and for personnel necessary for the substantial growth in the coming years and coming decades. We vision a partnership with Ivy Tech Community College. We want this facility to include a designated area for a electric vehicle, battery electric vehicle technician apprentice program. So there's, the idea here is Ivy Tech would partner with us, the classroom training would be done at Ivy Tech, the hands-on experience would be at this facility, where the electric vehicles are located. We, we envision a LEED-certified building that will include efficiencies, sustainability, and cost effectiveness for us to transition, transition to the zero-emission fleet. Second, we're, goal will be pursuing an increase in state funding. The need exists for, for this increase across, across the state. Transit providers, small and large, have voiced their opinions that the funding through the Public Mass Transport, Public Mass Transportation Fund has not significantly, significantly increased for over 10 years, while we've seen expenses increase roughly 60% during the same timeline. With the 2025 Indiana Budget Session this year, we hope to make our case for increased funding. We plan to work collectively to demonstrate the need and justify the case. And our third goal, we want to expand the Blink microtransit program to provide coverage for the entire city. Currently, 11,000 residents within the city limits of Bloomington are not within walking distance to a bus stop or a microtransit pickup point. That number is expected to grow as new developments come on or being built. We, we would like to offer some sort of public transportation to every resident within the city of Bloomington. Microtransit is also being explored as an alternative for underperforming fixed routes. We are going to be examining all fixed routes, looking to preserve the strongest segments of the route, and identifying the weakest to see if a microtransit option would be more attractive. So with that, the passage of this 2025 budget will allow Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation to position itself to continue transforming public transportation in our community and allow for improved services, service options. Our employees are committed to serve the community and continue to achieve the goals outlined in Transform BT, the agency's strategic plan. Thank you for your consideration, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Connell. We'll go to Councilmember Daly.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. I, and I'm so sorry if I've missed this or if I fell asleep at the wheel, but it sounds as if, what I understand is that you are, have identified a couple locations possibly for the new facility?
Correct.
Okay. But we haven't narrowed it down yet to?
No.
Okay. And do we have a timeline for when we're expecting that to happen?
We're hoping by June of 2025.
Got it.
So there's the environmental work. We're working with the consultants. We're in monthly communications with the Federal Transit Administration. It's somewhat of a complicated process, but we feel confident we're going to make it happen this, in 2025.
Super. Thank you.
Director Connell, I appreciate your presentation. I'm always impressed. Any news on downtown circulator proposal?
Oh, yeah, you know what? I should have mentioned that. I had them in my notes. So Phase Two of the Green Line Study does include a market analysis of a downtown circulator, and how it would impact the Green Line or complement the Green Line, so that will be conducted during the Phase Two. I would encourage you to go to wwwtransformbt.com, and all the resources and study results that have been delivered as of today are posted. So it's total transparency there. You can see everything that's going on.
Okay, terrific. Thank you for proceeding on that. I think it would be a, a real benefit to the community. Regarding the site relocation, a couple of questions. One is, of course, you need a facility that provides lots of space for your needs, and in, now and in the future, have you considered, I know with utilities is, or I'm sorry, Public Works is looking to, well, actually, utilities as well, co-locating to the Winston Thomas site. Is there adequate room that we could co-locate your needs there and obviate the need for, to, for land expense, to purchase land?
Where it would get complicated is if we were utilizing Federal Transit Administration funds, they are, they want to see projects that are strictly for public transportation. Now, if there is a connection between the two that we could, we could make, then that would be, may be possible, but I don't think it's something the corporation or the Board would be interested in. You know, we could, you know, we want, we want to be in a position to have a facility that's not going to just meet the needs of, our needs for the next 10 years, but the next 50 years. Currently, we share a location with Indiana University Campus Bus, and when the original agreement was developed, Campus Bus was much larger than BT, and now we flip-flopped. And they have more service bays than we do, but they're their service bays. So, you know, those, it's, it sounds great, but I think our, our priority is to be in a position to have a facility that is going to be for the next generation.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you know your needs, and you're considering what you can afford and so forth, so I'm out of time.
Connell, so the last time we spoke, late-night transit did not cover IU campus. Will Blink coverage include the university?
There are segments of, depending on what you're, what you're considering, campus. So the, the late-night service was somewhat by design, well, it wasn't somewhat, it was by design, because we have fixed route service operating through campus. So the idea behind the late-night microtransit program was to provide the safety net in the areas where fixed not, fixed route service wasn't available. Fixed route service is still available on campus, so we would encourage the students to utilize that.
Okay, so just to be clear, Blink will not cover?
No, not, not currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Connell. I, I had a question about the facility and future planning. I think I'm interested, and maybe hopefully colleagues are, but have not yet updated our green building ordinance, to which I'm not even sure if Bloomington Transit is subject, but looking at, with an eye to building decarbonization in the form of either geothermal electric for new buildings, especially, you know, long-term buildings. I know CBU, who we'll hear from next, has been looking at that in the context of their facility, you know, proposed facility expansions. Similarly, the Convention Center, and so in new, in new construction, it's, it's kind of important to get that right if possible. I also imagine there are some unique needs in your context, and is that something that is on your radar or mind at all when you're looking to build? I'm sure it's, we're not to that stage yet, but I just want to be asking and thinking about it.
Yes, because if, if we incorporate those type of components into the design, the likelihood of receiving award is greater. So when you, you know, we, we've included potentially a solar field, you know, we have a lot of different proposals, but we want to, we want to put together a proposal that checks all the boxes for the FTA, and, and some of those are, are boxes that need to be checked, the very things you mentioned.
Got it. And just, so just to clarify, that's encouraging to hear. But just to clarify, so it's, when it comes to space heating for the space, it's either like a geothermal electric heat source as opposed to gas? Is that right?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Connell, I wanted to ask about...
Mr. Connell, I wanted to ask about any progress on a regional transportation system or agreement. We, just for the benefit of the public, I'll fill in a little more. So with the Green Line project going outside city limits and the transit, taking over some of the rural transit routes with Altsville, we need a new structure to plan and fund public transportation throughout the county and maybe even beyond. So how is that coming along?
We submitted three proposals to the county to consider, three different fixed routes. You know, we would, we plan to meet with them sometime next week to discuss, because it's budget time. But if we were to, if they were to elect to fund any one of those three fixed routes, it would include complementary pair transit service that were required to provide by law under the ADA. So those individuals that are disabled, if they were in the service area, three quarters of a mile beyond the fixed route, whichever they choose, they would be eligible, if they qualified, for access transportation. So the ball's in their court. Included in that proposal, our cost structure, we did provide for revenue credit for 5307 funding. Our federal funds are generated based on the urbanized area, and the urbanized area is larger than the city limits. So in all fairness, you know, we included that, you know, because we know there's a lot of residents here in the city that want to go outside of the city limits. But, you know, there needs to be some financial contribution on part of the county. So we're going to have those discussions next week.
Okay, thanks. I'd love to get an update on that.
Okay.
Well, I was also going to ask about service out in the county. So thank you, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith, for also bringing that up. So instead of going in that direction, I appreciate your work on that with the county and trying to make sure that there's service in the urbanized areas that are not currently served. I'll shift gears and ask about bus drivers. There's been general bus driver shortage in past years. How are we doing with that? Do we have enough drivers? Are the drivers that we have continuing to serve? Do we have a lot of turnover, et cetera, et cetera?
So it continues to be one of our biggest challenges. We're doing well with retention. I think that's reflected in the 6% across the board wage increase that's outlined in our collective bargaining agreement. One of the things that we have determined, it's not an economic issue. When we do exit interviews, we have had yet to have one person say, "Well, I'm leaving because I don't get paid enough." It's typically, "I don't like working on weekends. My schedule is kind of crazy." It's the nature of the beast in our operation, unfortunately. And it's not just here, it's across the country. Now, with that being said, we did make a significant investment to shoot four different commercials for retention or for recruitment. You're going to be seeing those most likely on some of your social media feeds, so we're hoping that may move the needle. But we're taking four different approaches to recruit people. You know, the work that our bus operators do is very important, and it's very significant to a lot of people because it makes a big difference in the quality of their life. We have people that use our services to go to dialysis. You know, we're talking life and death. We have people that their only means of transportation to get groceries, medical appointments, is Bloomington Transit. So, you know, we want to play that up too, that, you know, if you come work for us, you're doing, you're doing the community some good.
Great, thank you. And I guess one more, real quick thing in the last 30 seconds. Have you talked at all with MCCSC about any kind of collaborative transportation problem or transportation networking at all? I probably don't have time for this, but I know that there's been some issues with, say, summer school, and MCCSC doesn't provide transportation for students to summer school, and that has been a hardship, I know, for some families personally, getting their children to those locations. Is that a conversation at all in 10 seconds?
We have not. We have, no. Short answer is no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then I'd like to go to public comment. The only question I have, while the public category is, what is in the binder? It's a huge binder. You've been carrying that around all day. So are there any comments from the public? If you do have them here in chambers, if you could just approach the podium, write your name down, say it for the record. And please, Attorney Kulak, if you could also say that for the folks online?
Yes, and if you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to make a public comment by using the reactions tab or the more tab or sending a chat to the meeting host.
Are there any tankers? It's great to make comments at 9:00 PM. No, no. Anyone online?
Not one.
All right, seeing none, we'll come back to council member comments. I'll start on my right. Any final comments? None. All right, to my left, any comments? Councilmember Stossberg, go for it.
Really fast. I just want to thank Mr. Connell. I don't know where he went anymore. Oh, God, there he is. Whoa. For, I submitted a couple of questions, and I appreciate you answering those. And I'm just going to highlight one, which is, I was kind of looking at this budget and going, wow, there's a lot of, like, subsidy in this budget. I wonder if that's typical of public transit budgets to have a lot of subsidy. And he shared a page from the Indiana Public Transit Annual Report that actually indicates that Bloomington has less subsidy than other cities in Indiana. And I just wanted to highlight that as kind of a success. And due to what, I'm not sure, except the hard work of making sure that our routes make sense and that our ridership numbers are there on the routes that we have, and trying to be really thoughtful about how it is that we're providing service. So I just wanted to highlight that as some appreciation, that I think that, you know, for all the ways that we know that there are still people, what you said, I think 11,000 residents who are not within service area right now in the city, we are still, for a lot of folks, doing a pretty good job with transit. So, thank you.
Anybody else on the left? Please, Councilmember Daly.
I just want to thank you all so very much for all of this work and the presentation. And I love what you said about how, you know, our transit drivers are just so important and just want to drive home the fact, you know, just how transformative transportation can be for people in so many different ways. Even, you know, my own children, we live off a bus line, and being able to take the bus to the library, because I don't want to drive back and forth 12 times a day, and other people who need it more than my children who just want to go hang out at the library. So thank you very much, and keep up the awesome work.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Daly, Councilmember Borello, final comments?
Sure. Too, would like to express my appreciation for your work. It's always impressive. I, good luck in finding a site for your new facility. Back when we were discussing years ago, the ED Lit from the previous administration, my highest priority at the time was for bus service, and I'm glad that it's worked out for the benefit of the community, and you're using it wisely and judiciously. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I would just say that I am super excited about the prospect of adding a circulator bus, and I'm glad that we're moving ahead with that. I do recall that at the initial conversations, I think when the resolution was passed, there was some sort of initial math done by former Councilmember Volin, who happens to be sitting here. And, you know, I think there was some, I don't recall while I wasn't on the council at the time, but I think there was some discussion about possibilities of funding this through changing parking fees and other things like that. So I'd be really happy, I think that's sort of, you know, extra budgetal, if you will, like, I mean, outside of these conversations right now, but would be really, really happy to work in any way, to, whether it's to create the political will or to just think through possibilities. I think that will be something really transformative for our downtown. So thank you for putting that on your items and answering those questions. Thank you.
All right, everyone, we are at our last presentation of the night. We are going to make it, and so we'd like to call up City of Bloomington Utilities. Thank you for waiting so long. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Catherine Zager. I'm the Director of the City of Bloomington Utilities. CBU's mission is to enhance the quality of life in our community by providing safe, sustainable, and high-quality drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater services in a cost-effective manner, promoting public health, economic vitality, and environmental stewardship, with the vision to be the leading municipal water utility organization in Indiana. We currently have a staff of 190 full-time employees and five part-time employees split between six divisions, admin, finance, environmental, engineering, operations, and transmission and distribution. I'd like to take some time, also, I'm going to be very fast, I've got a lot to get through. I'm going to take some time to talk about our successes, though. So in water, we're proud that we have completed a long-term water supply resiliency plan, and we've also had several improvements at the Monroe Water Treatment Plant, including we've replaced filter media underdrain systems and intake bar screens, we've designed chemical feed line and tank upgrades, we've created a facilities plan and asset management assessment, and built a new press and improved e-watering system. In sewer, we have upgraded 13 lift stations, including the full replacement of two of them. We've replaced electrical lines and influent bar screen at Dillman Wastewater Treatment Plant, and we've rehabilitated a belt press at Blucher Wastewater Treatment Plant, Blucher Pool Wastewater Treatment Plant. In storm, we have completed our street sweeping routing plan and have, will have fully implemented this by the end of this year. We also dredged 20-plus years of accumulated sediment at Miller Showers this year. We completed our Clear, we will, by the end of this year, complete our Clear Creek Culvert Reconstruction Project, AKA the Hidden River Project. The final phase will end this year for a total of $4.6 million, marking the end of a 25-year and over $31.3 million project. We have also spent some in community contributions, including almost $10,000 in customer assistance, $46,000 in residential stormwater grants, and $25,000 both to Lake Monroe Water Fund and Friends of Lake Monroe. We will also be installing customer kiosks to help have increasing the convenience of paying bills by the end of this year for $60,000. Some of the challenges we're facing, our primary challenge right now is our water fund. We are at the end of our last rate case, and operating expenses and project costs have significantly increased compared to what we used to estimate our last rate case. We are closely managing our cash balances for the water fund, but we are keeping it tight. We are very much in need of our 2025 rate case, which I will detail later. Another need of ours is that we are outgrowing our current facilities. We have a need for space for both staff and equipment as we outgrow our current service center and garage. We're still facing some supply chain issues as far as, like, delays in supplies. And also, we've had some changes in leadership where we've had to take a look at some of the projects that were proposed in the past and do some reprioritization. Some of the opportunities and things that we're excited about, we have made some substantial progress on our Winston Thomas site and the proposed service center. We have spent a significant amount of money on both the demolition of the site and the design of a proposed service center. The site, by the end of this year, will have been completely cleaned of debris from the former, debris from the former plant and from city dumping. This is going to put this parcel in a good position for any future development. We also have partnered with Champlin to help develop 50% designs for the future service center. This included a lot of focus sessions and input from staff. We are also doing a floodplain redetermination, and that is still in progress on the northern half of this parcel. This will open it up for additional options for development. Other opportunities we have is, we partnered with Wesler to do a full asset inventory at the Monroe Water Treatment Plant. This will help us with our capital improvement plan and future rate cases. We are going to be implementing Title 13, our new stormwater ordinance, and then we are also moving to text notifications for customers to communicate important updates. Here are 2025 goals. We have nine of them. Here are the first five. I will go through them in detail. And yes, I will go through them in detail. And here are the next four. All right? And here is our review budget summary. So this is broken down into water, sewer, and storm. Each of these are separate funds with separate rates. For our 2025 budget proposal, our total is $56,476,000. This is that same budget separated by fund and then by the different categories. We have personnel, supplies, other services, and then our capital funds. Some notes on the budget. So in water, personnel has gone up 27.1%. You'll notice that this is less than the personnel percentage change in both wastewater and stormwater. This is because we have moved some of the expenses that have historically been captured in water to storm. So we have some expenses that support all of the utilities. Traditionally, we were splitting those between water and wastewater. Stormwater was not taking on part of that burden, and now we are switching to a model where stormwater, as it becomes larger and more important in our utility, that is now, stormwater fund will now take on some of those expenses. This increase includes the impacts from the compensation study, and overtime that was not included in the previous budget. Supplies are up 41.3%. We are using estimates for chemicals based on what it has been costing thus far this year. We're also using current trends to estimate main break costs and other repairs. Other services is down 17.8%, and this is because last year we put in two years of interdepartmental payments. This year, we only have one. Sewer personnel is up 49.7%. This is because of the compensation study impact and, including overtime, that was not included in the previous budget. Supplies are up 41.5%. Again, we are doing estimates based on current costs and using current trends for maintenance and repairs. Other services is down 19.7%, again, because of only one year of the interdepartmental. Storm budget, again, compensation study impact. Also, we are increasing staffing in storm and moving some expenses from water to storm. Supplies are up 135.9%. This is because we don't bond for all of our stormwater projects, and so some of our projects are being paid through the cash fund, and that is represented in both supplies and other services. Additionally, we're transferring 5% of the interdepartmental from storm as well. Okay, goal one. Our first goal is to upgrade and replace critical water infrastructure. This includes both design and construction for booster station upgrades and improvements, also the design and construction for replacing and upgrading tanks and chemical feed lines in Monroe Water Treatment Plant. Generally, the need for this is that we have aging and damaged infrastructure. The budget impact on these, specifically the west booster station upgrades, will be $2.2 million. The south-central booster station upgrades will be $5.4 million. And then the chemical feed line replacement and tank upgrades at Monroe Water Treatment Plant will be $3 million. Not all of these expenses will be in 2025. Some of these projects will take longer to expense. Some of the outputs and outcomes from this is that all of the chemical treatment processes at Monroe Water Treatment Plant will have redundant and safe lines, ensuring continued water treatment without interruption. The west booster station should be fully restored to full function with reliable backup power, and then the designs for the improvements at both of the booster stations will be complete and ready for bidding. The timeline for these is that the designs at both the booster stations will be done by early 2025, with the construction of the west booster station starting in the summer of 2025. The feed line project is going out to bid this year, construction starting next year. We'll be partnering with Commonwealth Engineering, Kukosen Contractors, Donahue Engineering, and FA William. Our second goal is to keep up with the cost of operating and maintaining excellent water service. Like I said, our water fund is a challenge, and so we have two strategies here. One is our rate case that we are currently working through, and the second is to take a temporary loan from sewer to help fund some of these critical projects in water. Regular rate cases are necessary with keeping up with the increased cost of water service, increased costs of replacement of older equipment, maintenance, and operation. The legal and accounting costs associated with this rate case is $489,000. The legal and accounting costs associated with this rate case is $489,000. The rate, the rate case will reflect our comprehensive water CIP that we're excited about, and this is based on a system-wide asset inventory. Our new rate will allow us to keep up with costs of projects. The sewer loan for water will provide funds for critical water infrastructure. Our timeline for that is that we are hoping to submit to the IURC by the end of Q4. We're hoping that the approval will happen mid-2025 and be secured by the end of '25 with the rate case potentially going into effect into 2026. All right, goal three. Our third goal is to increase resiliency to large storm events and improve water quality through nature-based solutions. This includes creating detention, partnering with engineering for right-of-way projects, and beginning preliminary designs for a bioretention wetland complex for Clear Creek. The budget impact of that is that the Clear Creek Bioretention Facility, preliminary designs are not to exceed $500,000. The regional detention facilities are approximately $310,000, and then our Greenway Right-of-Way Infrastructure projects are $60,000 annually. Our timeline for this is that the two bioretention projects are, one is in the public feedback phase with the goal of starting construction next year, and then our second one, we are pending a project status letter from the IFA Brownfields Program. Our right-of-way green infrastructure improvements happen annually, and we are hoping to put out a RFQ for designs and renderings for this Clear Creek Bioretention Wetland Complex by the beginning of 2025. For our plans, partners, and public input, we will be partnering with city engineering. We have been for a while, and this is also in our stormwater master plan. We will be doing public outreach and regularly scheduled bio, or utility service board meetings when it comes to our bioretention facilities, and CBU will be partnering with other departments when it comes to the Clear Creek Bioretention Complex. Our goal four is to improve wastewater services at Dillman Road Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the goal, to achieve the 19 MGD rating at Dillman Wastewater Treatment Plant. This, this design will also include safety improvements at the plant. We've been working on this for a while. Essentially, we will be able to treat more water and to meet the current and future needs of the growth of our city. The capacity and safety improvements will be a total of $6 million. The outcomes for this is that we will be in a place to achieve 19 MGD and will attempt to achieve 20 MGD through data collection and reporting as suggested by ITM, and that our infrastructure at Dillman will be safer, more reliable. Our fifth goal is to improve the capacity and efficiency of wastewater collection system. Essentially, we're going to continue with our sewer lining projects and begin the construction of a relief sewer capacity improvement that goes from Rogers Street to Dillman Wastewater Treatment Plant. The sewer lining will be $500,000, and then the sewer relief project will be 2.9 million for design and 15.1 million for construction. The outputs and outcomes for this is that we will reduce or eliminate sanitary sewer overflows, and that no new sanitary sewer overflows will happen as we experience growth at the city. The sewer relief is slated for the end of 2024 and the beginning of, or the end of 2025 for construction. Sewer lining project is ongoing. Our goal, our sixth goal is a stormwater goal of inventory, assess, and rehabilitate our existing critical stormwater infrastructure. CBU is developing a jurisdiction-wide stormwater system management and maintenance plan as part of our stormwater master plan. We also plan on rehabilitating limestone arches in the Spankers Branch West Fork. We do not currently have hydrological models, and these will help inform better CIP projects in stormwater. Our system-wide management plan is $185,000 for limestone arch repairs are $400,000. Our RFQs for this will be out for 2024 Q4 or the beginning of '25. This is a first step in a multi-year process. The arch rehabilitation will be completed in 2025 with the goal of beginning construction and, design will be complete in 2025, construction late 2025. This is informed by the stormwater master plan. Okay. All right. Our seventh goal is to upgrade the instrumentation and equipment and replace the pumps at Blucher Pool Wastewater Treatment Plant. The SCADA and HMI upgrades that are currently in design will be implemented in 2025. These plans also include capacity and process evaluations, increase of reliability and resilience, and a variety of plant improvements. The current SCADA and HMI systems at Blucher Pool are obsolete, where getting new replacement parts are unavailable due to age. These improvements will increase cybersecurity at the plant, which has become a larger concern for treatment plants. The design of the plant hydraulic expansion improvements will determine the upgrades to capacity. The SCADA and HMI upgrades are $560,000, and the processing capacity improvements will be about 1.1 million. The improvements that we're making to the SCADA and HMI systems will be renewed for a 20-year lifespan. They will increase productivity and automation at the plant, and they will, the capacity improvements will help Blucher Pool accommodate future growth of the city and give us increased reliability and resilience. The timeline for the SCADA and HMI upgrades are that the designs are 90% complete and that we hope to have the whole project complete by the end of 2025. Our current capacity study will be completed by the end of this year, and that will inform the design and of the process of the capacity improvements. Any upgrade, any construction upgrades would begin in 2026. We are partnering with city ITS and Westler Engineering for the SCADA upgrades, and we are working with Black and Beach and Commonwealth Engineering for the capacity evaluations. Our eighth goal is to improve and reimagine customer assistance program. In 2025, CBU plans to research how to remove barriers in our current customer assistance program with the goal of uninterrupted water service for all. The redesign will increase the amount of customers in situations that are eligible for assistance and reduce shut-offs. The need for this is evident in that CBU has never fully spent the 50K in our annual budget that we designate to this, despite having over 9,000 shut-offs annually. Our current financial assistance program seems to have some arbitrary barriers, such as a customer having to be at least two months behind and also not yet shut off, and also to pay their current bill. The budget impact for this will be $100,000. It's an increase of $50,000. This will be a combination of us increasing who is eligible for this and also doing some research into what we can do to make a better system. Our timeline is that we will spend a substantial amount of time doing research and development of a program that maintains customer water service while remaining fiscally feasible. After monitoring the impact of the changes that we have made this year, we will use that to understand how much more of the additional funds we can use for research and development of a better program. We will continue to partner with SECAP on this program, and we've already discussed what some of the changes could look like. Our final goal is to contribute to local nonprofits to protect and preserve our critical water resources. In 2025, CBU will donate to Friends of Lake Monroe and to the Lake Monroe Water Fund. Both of these organizations' missions involve protecting our, protecting and preserving our watershed of Lake Monroe, which is our sole drinking water source right now. Friends of Lake Monroe implements and supports projects that are aimed at reducing pollutants in the watershed, such as their septic tank replacement program, and then the Lake Monroe Water Fund leverages contributions to secure additional donations to help fund these shovel-ready projects. The budget impact is $50,000. The output and outcomes is that Friends of Lake Monroe will help fund a watershed coordinator who is instrumental in coordinating these programs, and then the Lake Monroe Water Fund will use that contribution to leverage additional funding for shovel-ready projects. Both of these organizations present their work annually at a regular public meeting of the Utility Service Board. Each contribution happens annually. They are both our partners. We've also been working with the ESD on the development of some of these project specifics. Thank you. I will take questions.
Thank you so much. Right. There's a lot to get through. Before I pass the questions, just wanted to say congratulations on the current announcement that you're no longer interim Herv Ray. Just wanted to celebrate that. Questions to the right? We'll start with Councilmember Rallo, and then we'll go to the left. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation, and my first question is about, we had a boil order for turbidity a couple of weeks ago, is how or why did this happen, and is it likely to recur?
So, it happened as we were putting sand for one of our new filters, as we were improving the filters at Monroe. It was an error in the program of our PLC, which kind of controls the functions of that filter. In the, so, it basically reset, and then the sand went into where the clean water is, where it should have gone, where we put the backwash. It is not likely to happen again. We have fixed that, and we have checked all of our other PLCs to make sure that was not a problem in theirs as well.
Okay, thank you for that. I had a question about the, the request for quotes for Clear Creek Bioretention, and does that include the retention pond between Sheridan and South Downs?
That does not, and it would be a request for qualifications specifically.
I have thematically, I've been asking questions about whether growth comes at a cost, and so, there's, as, as we expand services, as we have more needs in terms of like material, energy, capital, costs, employees, et cetera, do we have, have we comprehended whether costs are internalized or externalized? In other words, to what extent is it being borne on the back of existing rate pairs? And would that be, should we have a study? Should we have a consultant study to find out?
I'm sorry, what is being borne on the back of?
The expansion of services and the inherent costs of expansion.
Oh, yeah, so, I guess, expansion as far as growth within the city, you know, rates are based on usage, and so, I don't think we have a study about what, if there's an undue burden on rate pairs for growth, but because it is based on usage, my assumption would be that as it grows, those who are using more are paying more.
That's the assumption that I have too, or I might have that, but I'm not sure. And I wonder if, because we, we do have increases in rates at times, and those are existing rate pairs. It's not static, it's, we're increasing that. So, I just think it's something that we need to explore, and I just wanted your opinion of that, and I think that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
To the left, any questions? Councilmember Staskburg.
Thank you for hanging in there. You have a lot of projects going on, so I just want to say that, and then I think my question may involve HR and the mayor's office, and they've been sitting back there for so long, I figured that I may as well. So, during this presentation, I saw high personnel increases, and you said that those were based on salary studies, right? But in other departments, I didn't see those. So, should we expect that the budgets of other departments are going to change as the salary study increases them, or do those other departments not have big changes based on the salary study? Or have we just not gotten to those departments? And I kind of asked this maybe on the first day, whether we're actually going to make sure that we get to those departments, but...
All of the departments will be impacted. It's that CBU is a separate entity, so when we estimated what could crow cost to implement, there's one number for all of the other departments of the city in Bloomington, that number was, that we set aside was $6 million. That lives in the HR budget until we determine exactly how it impacts every single role by department, and then the estimate for CBU lives in their own budget.
Okay, and we haven't actually seen the HR presentation yet, right?
Right.
Because that's tomorrow. So, that's why I haven't seen it anywhere, because I'm going to see it tomorrow.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, great. I'm so glad that you were here, you know, all night just to answer that question. Thanks.
Thank you. As our designated utility service board, I'm excited to hear the budget again, and excited for the goals you all have. I wanted to ask about goal eight with the customer assistance program. It's a program I remember asking former director Kelson about, like, pretty in-depth a few times, just really digging into assumptions there, especially in the context of, you know, regular necessary rate increases, as well as when we're talking about things like, like, local income taxes raising, raising revenue, you know, and thinking about the impacts on folks who are, who are cost-constrained. And I think, as you know, like, there are a lot of disconnections for non-payment, like, there's, there's almost certainly, we know that folks are economically insecure in our community, to a greater extent than the program is currently supporting. I guess, so I'm excited about that overhaul and what you'll find through, through doing some research and probably conversation, I assume, with others about best practices and things. I'm curious to stay engaged in that conversation, but I also wanted to ask about, have we ever looked into income-based rates of any kind? I imagine the IURC is fairly opposed, and there are implications to that, but like, as well as to policy choices like that. What are your thoughts about either income-based rates or percent of income payment plans, or doing fixed charges that are tiered by income class or something like that?
So, I have thought a lot about that, and we, we can't offer different rates. However, other utilities do something like credits, which are income-based, which could impact, which could go towards a more sustainable way of helping customers keep their water on.
When you say can't, is it because the IURC won't approve it? Or is there some other statutory prohibition of, of having different rates based on income?
I am not sure if that's IURC or if that's statutorily prohibited, but yes, I know that we cannot have alternative rates.
Okay.
We have to keep the same rate.
Gotcha, and as far as a credit as an alternative, is that something that would still be contained in the, the constraints of revenues meeting costs within the utility ecosystem? Or would it be coming from another funding source, like external to CBU?
I don't think that would come from another funding source external to CBU, no.
Because, yeah, doing it within CBU would kind of be the same, it'd be the workaround, same thing that I mentioned, yeah, they would balk at. Okay, thank you. That's helpful information.
To the left, Councilmember Pete Mott Smith.
I wanted to ask about the frequency of water shut-off to residential customers. Is that, how, do you know how frequent that is, and is that frequency increasing, decreasing? Do you have a sense of that?
I don't have a sense of whether or not it's increasing or decreasing. I know that it's relatively, I wouldn't say frequent, but common. We have a fair amount of shut-offs on a pretty regular basis, yeah. Is that the answer? I don't know.
That, that's an answer. Is, is there any tracking of the frequency and how we're doing? Because you were also talking about the customer assistance program and how some people don't know about it, and so, is there a connection there? Do you think that, you know, have you been seeing more shut-offs, and that's why you want to get more people connected with that program?
I think the reasoning really was that we set aside a certain amount of money every year in our budget to have this customer assistance program, and we've never used all of it, even though we have all kinds of shut-offs. We have, you know, on average, 9,000 a year. So, you know, there seems to be a disconnect between there.
So, I think you mentioned in your presentation that you were planning to do more publicity and outreach about it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmembers, on the left, anybody else? To the right. Incredible, no questions? In which case, we will move to public comment, the last round of public comment this evening. If you have a comment that you'd like to submit, if you could please come to the podium, write your name down, then say it for the record, because duplicity is great. Attorney Kulek, could you also tell the people on Zoom for the last time?
Yes, if you would like to make a comment? Please do so by raising your hand, using the reactions tab, or if you can't find it, the moord tab, and if you need help, you can always send a chat to the meeting host.
Yeah, I made a mistake. Duplication, not duplicity. Duplicity is bad. Duplication is, is great. Anybody want to make a comment? None in council chambers. Anyone online?
None.
We'll give them a moment, just in case. Okay, still no one online? All right, we will return back to council comments for final closing remarks. All right, we will return back to council comments for final closing remarks. On my left, Councilmember Stasberg, please.
Just a follow-up question to Isabel's question instead of making a comment.
So as long as it stays within the time.
Great. So the follow-up question on the shut-offs is, so are those shut-offs 9,000 unique customers, or are the same customers, like, getting shut off and then turned back on and then shut off again? And then similarly, are there certain seasons of the year that there are more shut-offs than others, and you might need to follow up with charts and data, et cetera, et cetera? And that's fine too, because that would be a really quick answer right now. Thank you.
Yes, I can absolutely follow up with that. I know that we do have some customers who have repeat shut-offs, though.
Comments to the left. Councilmembers, Pete Mott Smith.
Just again, congratulations on being appointed director, and congratulations on, like, the most quick, concise, and yet clear report that I have heard in quite a while. So, good job.
Thank you.
To the right, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, congratulations.
And you, you run a very complicated but vital department. I just wanted to add, shout out about a meeting that I had with constituents, and it's about the detention pond that we discussed, and I appreciate, retention pond, I think, at Sheridan and South Downs that we discussed back in May, and I understand it's on hold for the moment. And I, I think there's concern there, of course, because it's a wooded area appreciated by the neighborhood that was recently cleared of invasives by voluntary effort, and, and so people want to know exactly why it's needed. I understand that, you know, it's a general, the general intent is to mitigate or reduce stormwater in the aggregate, but, you know, the volume would be appreciated of knowing specifically why it should be there and so forth. But we discussed that. But I wanted to add that there are areas where retention has really worked well, and specifically as it's affected people downstream, for instance, in Deer Park, that really helped people in the, gosh, I can't remember the neighborhood, Longwood, Longwood neighborhood. There's another need, it's not my district anymore, it's actually District Five, Cape Cod Village, where there's stormwater, it's encroaching on people's walkout basements, and maybe there's a retention possibility, I think, in Barclay Gardens that used to be used. The point is, is that I'm not opposed to retention, but, but knowing specifically why, and there's trade-offs, of course, and in this case, we're trading off something that's appreciated by the neighborhood, and they would like to know the full impact of that and why it's needed. So anyway, I just, I look forward to discussing that with you further, and thank you for all the good work that you do. Appreciate you and your department.
Thank you so much, Director Zeiger and CBU staff. It is a privilege to get to hear you all every couple of weeks and witness your, your day-to-day work a little more closely. I'm there most of the time, not all of the time. I'm a non-voting member, so it's okay. But a couple, couple of things in follow-up. One is, I think I'm interested in similar questions as Councilmember Rallo about as we expand and as we reach capacity with infrastructure, how we think about extension of service, how we think about who bears what costs. Obviously, it has bearing in the context of annexation, and it's, you know, a common area of discussion. I think it's worth noting that this is true of all infrastructure, including all utility infrastructure. The denser the residential population, the higher density, the, the lower those people are, are sort of taxing the system, so to speak. The lower density, bigger houses, bigger yards in particular, the more infrastructure needed on a per capita basis. So we do have massive, with a uniform rate structure, there are massive cross subsidies going on from more dense areas to less dense areas. That's the wealth or income transfer. Director Hiddle earlier mentioned Strong Towns. They have, they do some good 3D visualizations of these. If you look up, like, Strong Towns Tax Map, they show how that, exactly how that works and functions. And so just wanted to note that. But two other things. One, Goal Three, I'm super excited about the scoping and looking into the large-scale Bio-Retention and Wetland Complex for Clear Creek. I think that's a really big opportunity, so looking forward to hearing how that progresses. On Goal Eight, I would be, which is the Assistance Fund, I would be interested in more conversation, just to understand, maybe with Chris Wheeler, what is the, the legal issue with trying to have income-based rates of some kind? I think in general, the more progressive states out there where utility regulatory commissions are governing things, we're seeing more and more prevalence of percent of income payment plans, income-based rates for fixed charges, re-urge management programs, for instance, those kind of things that I think we should try to stay at the leading edge of to the extent that we're legally allowed. And if we do need to bring in external funds in, you know, because the IURC won't let us use funds internally to CBU system, I think we should explore, consider the Economic Equity Fund, which was created in the context of the ED-Lit increase. The council was worried about the economic hardship it might impose on people, and we created the Economic Equity Fund, which has been administered in CFRD, and largely going to supplement nonprofits, kind of through like, like medical debt forgiveness and other things like that, which are absolutely vital needs as well. But they're less systematic, and they're not as much a city service. And so if there were an area where we were thinking about redirecting a million or a portion of a million dollars, where we know there's a need and we're delivering services as a city, I think this could be something to explore. So that's all. Thank you.
Other comments to the left. Other comments to the right. Seeing none, thank you so much, Director Ziegler. It's such a pleasure. And to everyone, thank you for being here this evening. Again, this is the third of four hearings. Tomorrow, we have our last and fun, final one, and then thereafter, the, the actual legislation that we'll be voting on around the budget will be introduced in September with final voting happening in October. So thank you all for being here. Have a wonderful evening. Goodbye. We are adjourned.